We'll shut up. Agenda meetings called to order. Do we need it? We don't need to call the order?
No.
Okay. Item number 2A, Commissioner Appointee.
Okay. So, good morning, everybody. We're going to get started. We'll start with item one, which is just discussion of the budget rules for the day. So, for you all, if it's okay, what we have traditionally done here is you'll notice the two boards at the front of the room. What we do is we go through each of the groups, and you'll see that we've organized it into four different groups. We start with counsel and commission appointees. Then we go into Roberto Venegas's group, then we go to Laura Perry's group, and then we finally end with, I'm sorry, then we go to my group, and then we end with Marshall. And then Greg will do some cleanup on that. That's kind of the agenda for the day. And as we go through each of those groups, you all ask any questions you have. We have staff here to answer those questions. And then if you would like to make any changes to the budgets as presented for either that group or that appointee, what we typically have done in the past is if five of you want to discuss that, we put that on one of the post-it notes, so we get five votes. The mayor will make sure that they're there. Once we have five votes, it goes on the board that there's at least enough consensus to discuss it further. And then, once we get through everybody, then we'll come back and go through everything that's on the board, and you need six votes to go ahead and make that change in the budget. And then what we would do is we will bring forward, depending on how many changes we have right now, the plan is to bring it forward at the October 20th meeting would be first reading, second reading would be the first meeting in November. Depending on how many changes you guys have, we may push that two weeks if we have a whole lot of changes. But right now, we've got everything lined up. We can handle some minor changes and get it through for the 20th. But that's the timing on this and the plan. So, Mr. Mayor, if there's any questions or discussion, are you guys okay with those kind of rules for the day?
Is there any objection?
Yes, sir.
Francois's, or how do you say it?
Cost wise.
Councilmember Coombs.
So, are we doing of members present or of total?
We have typically done, because you guys are going to be voting on the ordinance, we have typically done five members to get it on the board, and then six members total. So, we've typically stuck by the six members, not a majority of those present. But again, it's your call.
Those present.
Yeah, so I...
It should be six.
Okay.
It should be six. Like, that's not right.
My fear would be if we don't get to six here, we're not going to get to six necessarily on the floor, and then we've got ordinances that are prepared. So, I think I'm agreeing with you, councilmember.
Five or six. I think that's the question.
Well, five to put it on the board.
Five to put on the board. Is there any objection to that? Okay. Then, well, that's the way we'll proceed.
All right. With that, the first group up are the commission, council and commission appointees. You'll see each of the departments listed with the page number in the budget book. We can either take them as a group or go one by one. It's the preference of the body. Mr. Mayor.
Any objection to going as a group instead of one by one? So, you mean that we would do...
So, yeah, we would do the city attorney. Yes, exactly. So, yeah.
The two A's all together.
Again, it's your call, sir.
Yeah, that's the two A all together. Let's go all together.
They're going to stand up there.
Okay.
I mean, I do have questions that apply multiple.
Sure, you still can ask.
Oh, actually, we'll go separate.
Oh.
Separate time.
Otherwise, they're all standing there.
They're going to go separate.
Okay. Any objection to going separate, we'll go separate. Okay. So, two, city attorney.
Open for questions. We did the budget presentation. As you know, my budget did go up a little bit because of the council direction to maintain as many lawsuits inside my office as possible. I think I've only sent one out in the year that I've been city attorney. That was because of a conflict of interest. So, at some point, we're going to see the realizations, and I think as we talked about last year, we're going to have to spend a little bit of money to save a lot. And that's what we're doing. So, as an idea, my litigation team has gone from three lawyers to now seven. And one of those, I did transfer from the criminal division from my office over to the civil, so that's a reduction of one or the criminal side. We've been able to manage the salaries and everything else, the benefits, where there hasn't been a huge increase in my overall budget. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Bergen.
Thank you, city attorney. So, I understand your FTEs didn't look like a reduction because you are taking those outside cases inside. My question is on the domestic violence cases. As obviously everyone knows, July 1 is when we turn those over to the county, and we have seen a reduction per month of those declining. So, my question is, how would you handle any reductions based on the reduction of DV cases in your office?
So, what I will tell you is, it's not absent to me that there will be a decreased workload in my office because of the domestic violence cases being transferred to the county. So, at some point, probably second quarter of next year, we're going to see that reduction in work in my office. And I've talked to Julie Heckman, my chief deputy over criminal. We do have consistent, I mean, not a whole lot, but we do have some consistent turnover just because of the nature of the business over there. So, at some point, we will hold open positions and not fill them as the workload goes down. My goal by the end of next year is to reduce an additional three assistant city attorney positions in the process. We've already done one because we went and planned for moving it over to civil, and that was a good conduit from the criminal division over to the civil division. I wanted those folks to see that there is a path to right, to promotion, to come over to the civil division. But yes, at some point, I can't tell you the date, but at some point, I believe there's going to be a clear indication of when the workload is going to decrease, and we'll make that call.
Okay. So, I would assume a year from now, so July of '26, we will see a significant drop. But my question, I guess, is on the warrants that we have. I think from the information I received from the public safety meeting, it shows, you know, which ones are in collections, which ones are at warrant, future trial dates, pending sentence. So, if my understanding is, in certain categories, they are already adjudicated, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, then, how much time does it, once they're adjudicated, how much time would it take to clear those?
So, usually, the probation cases, they're provided, they're put on a year probation. So, it would be, but that would, in my office, absent a motion to revoke probation, my office would be done with that case. Once it's adjudicated, and the person's placed on probation, except for, you know, complaints, you know, or violations of probation, then we would bring that motion. But the warrants that we're talking about, we're still, it's a very methodical approach that Julie and her team are doing. We go through the warrants that we have, and really, it's about what is our successful, how successful will we be if this person does get arrested on these cases, and we do need to prosecute? And we're going to be doing that as an ongoing process over the next three months as we get to the end of the year.
Okay. So, we are clearing them?
We're going to clear what we can. But again, we want to make sure that we have the victim's right amendment, so we want to make sure the VRA that we are only going to get rid of the cases that don't put a potential victim at risk.
Right.
But we are contacting the victims. We are doing, it's not just looking at a case going, oh, this is winnable. This isn't. This is doing all of the backend work to make sure that we're complying with the VRA before we do anything with them.
So, if we have cases that are 20 years old, 15 years old?
We don't have any of those.
We don't have any of those.
We don't have any of those.
So, can we get data? I would like to see, I would like to see data month by month of the domestic violence cases as they're cleared or as they're adjudicated, just to have a good, you know, idea of how it's progressing. So, you said we don't have any that old. Like, do you know what the oldest one might be?
Five years or less. Most of them were two years or less. Would that be...
There are some of the PC warrants and FDA warrants that are out there. There's nothing, the '70s and '80s and the 20 years.
But most of them were going to be within the last two years, right? So, they've had...
Okay. I mean, there's quite a bit.
There are. And they're all, right, there are a lot, the domestic violence cases. But again, it's, we were doing the research on those to figure out, are these people, are they still alive? Do they still live in Colorado? Because if they don't live in Colorado anymore, that goes into our analysis because we can't extradite them back to the Colorado to face the misdemeanor domestic violence. So, there's a lot of things that we're looking at. So, those numbers should go down as we go through those cases.
Okay. So, and then, what is in collections?
So, that is somebody who has been fined or has not been paying their community service fees, and they've been sent to collections to try to recover the money that they owe.
So, they're DV cases, but they've been adjudicated?
Correct.
And all, so all we're reading on is collections? So, shouldn't that not be counted in this?
So, we can't revoke somebody's probation just for money. And so, what we do is we send it to a collection agency to try to collect, and it just stays out there. I mean, it...
But it's no longer really a DV case.
Correct.
It's a collection.
Correct.
So, we can, okay. All right. So, I would assume that decreases workload.
Sure. It's, my office is not dealing with those.
Right. Okay. All right. Let me just, one more, make sure I have one. Oh. So, it was said before that the cases, like, I think, I think the public defender said that 60% of the DV cases, or of the entire cases, sorry, make up DV cases, 60%.
That's not by numbers, but I think by work. And I will tell you that, again, I think that was probably, I think, the worst study that the public defender's office did about how much time they were spending on the domestic violence cases. I'll let Ms. Keady speak to that when she comes up. But for me, is we have a variety of cases, and so, when I looked at people, right, how many people do we need to, you know, to reduce on how many domestic violence cases were going away? That's where we had come up with the four prosecutors. So, 60% of our cases, that is of the cases filed, that is what we're spending a lot of time on, because they're a DV case, if that makes sense.
Okay. And then, of the DV cases that are serious felonies, we don't...
They always go to district.
They always go to district. So, of the ones we currently have, none of them are felony related.
Correct.
So, they don't take as long?
Well, they, again, domestic violence cases, they, just the nature of them with the VRA and everything else, they do take a significant amount of time to process.
Like, three months, six months?
They have 90 days to get to trial unless there's a waiver and those sort of things. But it is, with the victim advocates, with everybody else in the justice system over there, we are spending a lot of time. So, if somebody does get arrested on a DV case, or we're going to prosecute that, we're not going to send that to the county. We're going to keep it in the municipal court, and our staff, my staff, the public defender, if it's a public defender case, probation, and the court staff will have to deal with that until those cases are resolved.
All right.
And that's the unknown. We don't know how many of those warrants at any given time. I mean, you could, police could arrest 30 people on warrants, and all of a sudden, we have 30 domestic violence cases on a Monday morning, right? So, it just depends.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hancock.
So, City Attorney Schulte. To Councilmember Bergen's question about those outstanding lingering cases that are because of funds that you're trying to collect, does it skew the data to have those still be on there even though it's just money? And how can you clean it up so it really, we're really looking at the actual cases that are active, that we're really working on, rather than these that are just kind of dangling out there for, you know, not decades, but for years because they haven't paid the fine?
So, I think because they're in collections, you know, it's easy just to ignore those. I mean, for lack of, again, the court staff is dealing with those because they are having it, money comes in, if the collection agency was able to get some of the money, or the people come in and pay, they're going to have some time on that. But as far as my office goes, there's nothing else for my office to do. So, if they're in collections, I don't count that as part of our workload.
So, it won't be on the reporting? That's where I'm trying to get. Will it actually still show up on the reporting?
I think it should because it's money owed to the city. But if you guys don't want that, you can let, you know, Acting Court Administrator Gibbons know that you don't want that information on the reports, but...
Okay. And so, can I have another one? So, now with, now that we're doing the municipal traffic cases in municipal court, how is that going to impact the caseload as you're moving forward, as those are starting to come in now?
So, traffic citations take the least amount of time to prosecute, and we are, generally, we never seek jail time on traffic offenses. I think she's referring to the registrations. Why not? That's what I'm saying, but I'm letting you in. So, absolutely. So, what I'm saying is...
They're just going to go in and out?
They're going to go in and out. And so, and it's very streamlined, and Judge Day could talk about the court process that he has over there. But the traffic citations are, take an inch of the time that a regular criminal offense case takes. But we're going to have a lot more, so...
So, unless there's some extra charges on there, you, we won't really know, except the number that are coming through. So, say, you arrest someone on a traffic, and you find out there are extra warrants or other traffic incidents or something like that that, you know, causes this to go from just a minor traffic thing to something else, we're tracking that too, and then your office gets involved to prosecute those things?
Yes.
And there's defense maybe that could be incurred here?
So, generally, on the traffic citations, because we're not seeking jail time, the public defender wouldn't be involved in those cases because they're going to be fined only, right? And that's pretty much across the board on traffic. I mean, I don't think that, I don't think we've ever sought jail time on a traffic ticket in a long time.
Very rarely.
Very rarely, right? So...
No proof of insurance.
No proof of insurance, the habitual, no proof of insurance. That's when we will do that. But generally, we waive jail pretty standardly on traffic. So, it would not be the involved court process that the other cases have.
Councilmember Coombs.
So, following up on that, and then we can see if folks have other questions about this issue, but if there are cases that are traffic related that would rise to the level of jail, they probably also are going to the county because there's non-misdemeanor charges involved there? Is that the deal? I'm sorry, am I not being loud enough, Julie?
Yeah.
So, if we have a traffic case that is serious enough that we would seek jail, it's probably going to the county, not to county court, or...
Not necessarily. So, we are traffic, we're going to keep it in our, we're not going to be transferring those to the county because we'll handle those. But if we are going to seek jail time, then they would have a right to counsel, and we would go through that process.
But like, mostly, right, if there's serious bodily injury, death, other things?
Oh, those are felonies. Those are going to go to the county.
They're felonies that go to the county. Okay.
And as you said, any cases that, if any state charges, APD will file everything in the state. We're not going to get some traffic in our court, and then the felonies in the county, they're going to send everything up to the county. Yeah.
Councilmember Lawson?
So, City Attorney Schulte, I have a question. So, you said that you're bringing a lot of your cases in-house, but there's still some cases, can you tell me the percentage of that? How much do you have an estimate of how many you're going to bring in-house versus out of doing outside of the city? The reason I'm asking that because you guys have some Supreme Court cases that you have to deal with, and we have in addition with the registration. So, when you're saying you're going to try to bring all that in-house, I'm just trying to understand, what is that percentage? And then, what is the dollar amount if you have an estimate?
So, what I'll tell you is, all the traffic citations, everything else, are going to be in my criminal division. So, they're going to be handled on the other side of the house, at the courthouse. As far as the civil division, I'll give an example. I think we have, in the last 60 days, the city's been sued 19 times, and we have kept all of those cases in-house except for one, just because of a conflict. And so, when you look at, I mean, generally, I would say, I mean, I'm trying to be conservative here on an hourly rate, but if you're pending 250 an hour on outside counsel, you know, on 19 cases, you know, different types of outside law firms, that adds up fast, where we have a set cost now with the staff that we have. And there's no argument anymore about, well, you know, we could settle this case, you know, it would take, it would take a million dollars to try it because we're going to pay outside counsel, but they'll take 750. So, we'll save 250. Where that argument is done, because we're going to be handling all those cases in-house. So, it doesn't cost us any more money to continue to defend the city, defend our, defend our employees, our police officers, our firefighters, and everybody else that deserves to be defended.
Mayor, can I just do a follow-up, please? So, with that being said, you're bringing everything in-house. How much overtime would that be?
Overtime?
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm assuming, I know that we have great attorneys, but I'm assuming that there's going to have to be some work on these cases.
Sure.
This is additional caseload. It's not just going to be, it just, I don't think from 85, they're going to have to be doing some additional work. So, what would be the overtime possibility?
So, I will tell you that I don't track the overtime because all my attorneys are salaried. And so, and they, I have, they're great. I mean, I more than doubled the amount of litigators on the litigation team because as, as the cases came in, again, we, you know, I think the, for lack of a better term, I think the plaintiff's bar is testing me right now about whether or not we're really going to write checks. And I've been very clear, we're not writing checks until we get litigated, right, until cases are litigated, because you have no idea what's going to happen in the litigation process. And so, I think I'm getting tested right now. I'll see how we're going to do it. And we're going to continue to keep working, and my deputy over litigation, she does a great job of making sure that those cases are evenly spaced among litigators. As a matter of fact, I'm lead counsel on a couple of them, so...
Okay. Well, let me just put it this way. Okay, maybe your attorneys are salaried, so they don't have to worry about it, but then you have legal staff. So, you have people that help the attorneys, and they may have to do, is there going to be any overtime or anything with those?
We don't pay overtime for those folks. What we do is I provide them comp time.
Okay.
So, if they want to take a Friday off, and I do, we're professionals over my office, I mean, everybody in the city is, but I treat my city attorneys and everybody at the staff as professionals. If they work Monday through Wednesday, and they've worked 60 hours in three days, I am not going to care if they buzz out Friday.
Okay. So, ultimately, you're not going to probably come back to counsel and say, hey, counsel, we're going to have to, you know, do outside counsel. Pretty much, you have a hold on all these cases that are coming in, and where outside counsel may not be needed. Is that the correct response?
There is no plan for me. My goal is to keep all these cases in-house. Now, if we get 100 cases in the next six months, I may be telling you guys, I don't have the manpower, we're going to have to hire eight more litigators to do that. So, I don't expect that to happen, but I, you know, I don't know, I always tell people as a lawyer, if I had a crystal ball, I'd be, I'd be really rich, but I don't, so...
Okay. So, there's a potential, there could be a potential.
Could be. I think it's rare. I think it's not likely, but, I mean, just depends on the work.
Further questions? Councilmember Coombs.
So, thank you, Councilmember Bergen, for the questions on the domestic violence, because that was a lot of what I had to ask. No, I'm glad we got those ones out of the way. My only other question is, in the prosecution division, what is the workload related to Hart Court? And then, how does that compare to the workload related to Wellness Court?
Julie?
The workload, so far, related to Hart Court, we expect that to be ramping up as the navigation center opens, and there will be more availability. Also, as the police department has ramped up their staffing on that, there were initially two officers, now it's up to six officers and a sergeant, which is helping that. So, we are seeing more numbers in Hart Court. But currently, as far as our office, I'm handling those cases as it comes up. So, we're not having other assistant city attorneys handle those currently. We'll see what happens as things increase, as far as the numbers of participants in Hart Court.
And how many participants are there currently?
The judge may be able to speak to that better than, the Hart Court navigators come under the judge as far as numbers of people they're working with versus the people that are actually in court every two weeks.
And are your litigators working, because I'll have questions for the judge as well, but are your litigator, are you or any of your litigators currently working with folks on Hart Court?
In the criminal justice division, yes. One person currently.
Further questions?
And then, just a comparison to Wellness Court. So, how much staff time is being dedicated to the Wellness Court? Just one person currently? And historically, what has that caseload been? Just one person currently? And historically, what has that caseload been since that's a longer-running program?
So as far as, if you're looking at our staff, it's the same. We have one-
Oh, one attorney?
One attorney assigned to work on those court cases.
Okay, and there's one attorney assigned to Hart Court, or one person, like one individual participant?
One attorney.
One attorney, okay, in both cases. All right. And how many cases are they covering at this point in both courts?
It depends how many participants are still being active in both of the Veterans Treatment Court and the Wellness Court.
Okay, and historically, like, what has that caseload roughly been annually?
I would say, historically, somewhere 10 to 15.
Okay, and then what about Hart Court so far?
I think that's what the judge was just-
You have seven, you just added three within the last two days, so we're at 10.
And are your attorneys working with those folks, Julie? Or Ms. Heckman? Sorry.
When you say "working with those folks," during the court sessions, we have one attorney assigned to that.
Okay, during the sessions, regardless of the number of folks, obviously, because you have to have some-
Yes. And then there's work in between times. Every time, as the judge said, we just added three new people this week. So we need to look at those cases, whether there's eligibility, whether, you know, I mean, there is work besides the in-court time, that that's handled by one attorney.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions?
I just want to, I love your new idea. I don't think you briefed your staff on it yet, about the 50% reduction in pay, but giving them cottons and allowing them to stay in the office. Great. Okay, seeing-
Is it tissue to roam?
Great idea.
I get far.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting city attorney's budget, please identify yourself. Great. More than six have arisen, so put on the board.
We're just going to go with, we'll put them on, if there's any changes, we'll put them on the board. Otherwise, we're going to, we appreciate the confirmation. We'll just go that way. So there's no changes for you all.
Okay, Civil Service Commission?
Got Matt Kane here.
Yeah. Do we have a place for them to sit?
We just like them standing up. We don't want to be too comfortable. So there you go, so, all right.
Take a chair over there.
There you go.
Good morning. I think the city manager's proposed budget reflects the charter responsibilities of the Civil Service Commission. So, yeah, nothing to add or change the Commission break board.
Questions for Civil Service Commission? Is there any objection? All those in favor of accepting the budget from Civil Service Commission, please identify yourself. More than six have arisen, so. Okay, thank you. Court Administration?
So we have Court Administrator Atkinson is out, so we have her able deputies. So we have Eric Gibbons and Lance Alexander here to answer the questions you all may have on the Court Administration side.
Hello? Questions, Court Administration? Councilmember Bergen?
Thank you. Just in terms of how I asked the city attorney in terms of the domestic violence cases going down, I do know you already made some changes, so I think you have three FTEs reduced. And I would assume you're going to look at continuing to analyze the decrease in domestic violence cases. And so do you foresee maybe other reductions in 2026?
Well, just like Pete said, we're going to wait till at least Q2 of 2026, just to see how these cases are working out. You've got to remember, just because they went away July 1st, we still had a lot of cases in the queue. So we've still got to work through these queues and see how many people on probation are going to go to probation. And I think, I'm going to say at the end of the second quarter, we'll have more data, and we can come back to you with more information. And then I think from there, I know Candace is talking about, seeing what else we can give up.
And I appreciate the reduction. Thank you.
Councilmember Combs?
Just to follow up on the question for the city attorney about cases in collections from domestic violence, is there a cost or workload impact to the Court Administration Department of those cases?
Well, I know we have, down in Court Services, they have somebody dedicated to that, and we're working on it. And to your question about the data, I got with our IT team, and the information that they put out before, I wanted them to hone in on a little bit more things, so I could really understand it. So when I looked at the data, it was kind of confusing a little bit. So I got with Kyle and his team, and they're going to put stuff together where we can all understand it a little bit more. And during your next Public Safety Meeting, hopefully, we can come and present up there.
Further questions?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, so when you're getting, collecting that data, are you going to differentiate between the older cases, how they're being moved forward through, and their, you know, the completion, for lack of a better word, in that reporting? Is that what you're trying to get to?
Yes. And then, just so you know, that I got the manager from probation working with us also. So I just want this data to be correct. I don't want to bring something to you and it's not correct. So, you're right. Any kind of way that you guys want to see this built out, if you want to see it a different way. So when it comes to collections, if you want us to take it off in the Court Administration side, and not take it off like Pete said, maybe set it to the side, so it makes a little bit more sense, saying these are the people in collections, and really, this is what it takes to get the collections done.
Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, thank you. All those in favor of accepting the Court Administration budget, please identify. More than six have arisen, so, thank you. Judicial?
Good morning. As it relates to the collection cases, they're not active cases for domestic violence when we add that number. It's literally, if you think about it in the terms of just an account payable, so the team member, like Keegan has indicated, that is working those collection cases, they're only working it in the terms of like a collections case, accounts payable case. They're not active cases within the court. So they're not appearing for court, there's no court action in the courtroom, nor, other than just seeing if they're able to collect what's outstanding on those cases that have been sent to collections. That's the only thing that's taking place with those cases.
Questions of Judicial? Councilmember Bergen?
On the same lines of my questions, just also, from your perspective, I know you have relieved judges. So if the domestic violence cases are on the decline, obviously with our ordinance, how do you see that affecting your-
Yeah. Just from sheer numbers standpoint, because of those cases being removed from the court, then that, the numbers are going to be dropped, as it relates to those prosecutions that this city attorney shall be indicating, do take a substantial amount of court time. However, we're also picking up new stuff, right? I think APD is focusing on other things, specifically the vehicle registration. So far, just in September, we had 321 cases cited for our court, and all of those cases are mandatory court appearances. So you're now adding, what we didn't have before, just in the month of September, 321 cases, that we, as from a judicial standpoint, we have to preside over those cases that come to court. The city attorney's office, they have to handle those cases as well. They're reviewing those cases, the probable cause determinations, and submitting that information to the court, talking to people about whether or not they went out and renewed the registration and reviewing it. So there is, there's dedicated time that you need to handle those cases. Talking with APD, we're expecting, just from, I think, the number of, kind of shows from what we had for September, we're looking at about 6,000 new cases being added to our court that we didn't have before, so.
Of those cases, are, is there a percentage that gets dismissed for wrong information?
I can just tell you what we've seen so far in the cases that have appeared in court, it's about 50/50. We haven't had any separate trial yet, but we've only handled, if they're in my division, we've only handled foul plea so far. And if it's separate trial, it's been dismissal because it was, they, the registration was expired for four months or less. They went out and renewed it by the 40, and they paid the $30 administrative fee. It's about 50/50 so far, but it's hard to say. Everybody has a right to trial.
I guess the good thing on that, though, is that people are, yeah, they're going back and getting their registration and getting things cleared up. Thank you.
Councilmember Hancock, and Councilmember Combs?
So Judge Bart, how are you splitting these, is it just one division is handling all the traffic cases, or are you spreading it out, or how's that working?
We created a specific docket for vehicle registration, because we know how important it is, and we needed to create a new slot for those soon-to-be 6,000 cases. It's in my division. It's going to be a busy docket in the morning, 8 o'clock is when it starts. So we carved out a specific time. All the other traffic cases, the speeding cases, the stop sign, signal light, everything else is in our first appearance center. I'm in another division.
Okay, so if there's anything additionally to, like, to what the other attorney said, if they're habitual, non-compliant for insurance and those kind of things, and if they decide they want to go to trial, I don't know why, but if they decide they want it to, would that still stay with you, or would that go with someone else?
No, if it's a jury trial, it'll be assigned to a jury division, dedicated jury divisions. Relates to that specific question. We do get serious cases. I mean, we had 12-point speeding cases where people are speeding out on the highway doing 110. And so those are, those are cases where prosecution may or may not waive jail, depending on circumstance, especially if they're reviewing it's along, you know, the extent of driving history for that individual. Serious careless driving charge, granted, we don't handle the careless driving as a result of death or anything like that. We get serious careless driving charges where, because of circumstance, it may, again, depend on facts and circumstances or driving history, this prosecutor makes sense. They're not going to waive jail in these cases. So those would then be, if it's separate, jury trial, transfer it over to a jury division, and it'd be scheduled for a jury trial, or a whole day jury trial.
Further questions? Councilmember Combs?
So, on the special division, so right now, we're anticipating 6,000 this upcoming year. Do we anticipate a decrease in cases as folks are seeing, like, oh, I'm going to have to go to court if I don't get this renewed, in terms of both the inconvenience and cost? Do we expect to see overtime in those cases?
You just have to wait to see. You would hope that when, you know, when word gets out that you have to come to court, it's now a mandatory court appearance, and you have to come in and, you know, face the charge and deal with the circumstance. People then, you know, some people go out and renew the registration. The hope is, yes, obviously you want compliance, that's the whole court, right? There's compliance for people getting registration. It's hard to say. It's hard to say what, if it will carry over to start to be a decline. APD, as I said, they have written in the state court, or they started before the law changed to where it was allowed in municipal court, 4200, as of August 1, of vehicle registration charges. And that's been on the books first, the state forever, right? And so you still see that level of non-compliance with people not getting registration.
That's helpful. So then I had just some additional questions about other items. So from the perspective of prosecution, they're dedicating the same amount of resources to both Hart Court and Wellness Court. I noticed that here, it looks like you're moving a judge from Wellness Court and half a position from teen court over to Hart Court. So my question first is, how are those being adequately staffed if you're removing, if you're moving those FTEs?
It's the same dedicated persons, or people, I should say, that we've had to service those courts that we've had. When we first brought on the Hart program, people that we needed, we brought on Navigator, Careful, and specific for that program, we had, that person was within the Wellness Court, Armed Forces Treatment Court team, but he then transferred over to the Hart. We had an opening for an assistant position, assistant Navigator Careful, which we filled. She was primarily going to be working with the Hart program, but now she's going to be going back in between Hart and Wellness Court and Armed Forces Treatment Court. She's going to be a support person for all three of those programs. So that's how we're servicing it, the way of those team members. In order to keep those team members, we moved money around to try to make it fit within the budget to where we can keep both, because the assistant was just going to be a one-year temp person, but because of the need and who she is, and the fact of work that she does for our team, it was clear to us that we needed to make sure that she stayed with our team, and so we needed to make sure that she was an FTE. So we had to move money around within the bucket of Hart with the bucket of what we had for Wellness Court and Armed Forces Treatment Court to make that work. And it came out to where it was a zero impact of legislation.
Okay, so are we reducing service to Wellness Court in any way as part of this process?
Not in any way. We have dedicated team members who hold Armed Forces Wellness Court, and we have a dedicated docket slot that includes a dedicated judge. Same is true for Hart. We have dedicated people for Hart. We have one individual, like, going to where she can help service both sets, if you wish to call it that, Armed Forces Wellness in that set, and she's going between both.
Okay. And then, in terms of the folks being served, for wellness, how many of those folks would qualify for Hart and vice versa? How many of the people going into Hart could otherwise qualify for Wellness Court?
It's a great question. And I hope I messaged it right, maybe I haven't, and if I haven't, that's my mistake. Hart Court is only for people who are charged from the specific Hart team of APD. So they're out there doing the trespass, signs are posted, force majeure, camping violations, that's the Hart team that she's dedicated those resources for. People that receive a summons and complaints from the Hart team, I'm not sure why we might be talking Hart, but APD is H-A-R, the Hart program is T-A-R. The Hart program, the Hart officers issue a summons and complaint, most people would be able to Hart program. All other APD tickets, from patrol or anybody else, if a person gets a summons and complaint, and they fit the criteria of the Wellness Court program, they would be brought into the Wellness Court. The Hart program is only dedicated, will only service those summons and complaints that are issued from the Hart team.
Okay, but like, how many of those people that are being identified and flagged by the Hart team could just go into Wellness Court instead?
Again, it's hard to answer, because do you remember when we first proposed and established the Wellness Court? It was for the high-end users of what we see in the court system. It's for people that have had multiple summons and complaints, multiple contacts with police or fire, and meet the criteria that people were there to get mental health or substance use treatment. That's what the criteria was for Wellness Court. With Hart, you don't have to have multiple summons and complaints.
But like, how many people do?
Out of the people that are-
People that are currently participating in Hart?
It's, it's, it's hard to say. It varies. Some people do have multiple contacts related to multiple summonses, some don't.
You know, it's really for people experiencing homelessness, but I really think we should try to focus in on the budgetary issues versus the policy considerations.
This is a budgetary issue, because they're moving the people from Wellness to Hart. So I'm trying to understand, like, do we really need to?
Councilmember Bergen?
So mine is budget related to Hart. How much do we spend? Is it the $301,000 is budgeted for Hart?
Yes.
And how many people do we serve?
Right now, because we just expanded eligibility for the program, we've had 32 summonses that are eligible, issued.
Right, but how many actually are in the program? I guess I'm just trying to, well, I mean-
The number will greatly increase soon. So we will have, our regional navigation center will be operational on November 17, and that will really dramatically increase the need for the Hart Court. So it's almost like we're working out the bugs right now, but the, it will scale up in November.
So I guess my question is, my question would be, why can't this fall under the budget for the Navigation Center?
Because the budget for the, we are limiting, and we'll have- Because the budget for the, we are limiting and we'll have Jessica Prosser come up on the navigation center pretty soon. Why don't we hold that?
Okay, I'll hold it till then.
Counselor Harcourt.
But so I do, the conversation has been that actually we would reduce street homelessness and that would reduce the different instances that folks are being summoned for by having the navigation center. So it's a little confusing to me how having the navigation center is going to, or increase the number of people that are being cited for trespass, open container and camping violations, which are the folks that are eligible for the Hart Court. So that's more of a policy question, I guess, but that's confusing to me. But really, my bigger question is, from a budget perspective, why does this need to be separated out from Wellness Court? And then I was wondering too, like, how are we tracking those citations that we have so far? Like, how do we know that it's a Hart Court citation instead of a general citation that's well eligible for Hart only and not Wellness? And then what kind of docketing resources are ending up being used for Hart only? Like, could we be saving resources essentially by having everything docketed as Wellness Court at one time instead of having a separate docket, separate, like all of this additional work and staffing being done?
Judge, can I wait in for just a second or you want me to wait?
Please do, Jessica.
I was just going to say, the Hart Court is having specifically housing-related resources, which is helping these folks get housed, whereas the Wellness Court wouldn't have those housing resources. The other piece to the coming to the navigation campus is we're hoping people actually show up to court because they're at the navigation campus versus having that barrier of not appearing for court. But the summons is specific to Hart Court. So they're not coming to the general court where they're not getting any resources at all. When they come to Hart Court, then there's specific resources related to people experiencing homelessness.
So people coming to Wellness Court aren't getting any housing resources or mental health resources? Like, they're there for mental health and substance use resources, right? So that they're not getting housing resources as well if they need them in Wellness Court? Is that accurate?
Well, I really think that members are expected to have a basic understanding of these programs in coming into this meeting as opposed to being educated on these basic understanding here.
Well, considering that the program was presented a certain way, that is why I have these questions.
Counselor Harcourt, I have something.
I would just remind everybody too, that these things are just really coming to fruition as we speak. They're coming out of the ground. The seeds were planted a long time ago. The navigation is, as I was opening up, Hart Court is really just starting to gain traction and we can create efficiencies from these in the next, literally the next couple of few months. We've been anticipating and looking forward to the opening of the navigation center for the Hart program. We can't wait for that to open because number one, it's a centralized place for the resources. We're going to hold the Hart Court sessions at the navigation center. They'll be there, we'll be there. So the chance, you increase the chances of success dramatically.
Okay, the question remains, are we offering housing resources to people in the Wellness Court if they need them?
If they need it, yes.
Okay, so then again, this to me seems a little bit duplicative and that is just a concern to me. I wonder if we can have some of the funds be in non-departmental pending the actual need being filled. Because right now, the need's not being filled and we're saying we anticipate it being filled, but it's not currently.
Counselor Lawson.
Judge Day, I just have a question and I mean, it is kind of budgetary, but when you're tracking who's coming into the Hart Court, is it by, like I'm just saying in my ward, you have a whole bunch of trespass signs and I know that, I know I submit a lot of things on that area. Is it, do you guys, is it tracked by that?
Yes, they have a specific time to appear in court.
Okay.
It's tracked because when Hart, the Hart team, the APD Hart team is out there doing those enforcements and they write a summons and complaint, notifying the court and our care coordinator, Navigator of who's receiving summons and complaint.
Okay.
And so that's how it's tracked.
It is tracked like that, okay.
Yes.
Counselor Harcourt.
Judge Day, do you anticipate that there will be some savings once these, once this is streamlined and combined as you're going forward or is that still yet to be determined?
It's hard to say and I don't want to give you that basic answer. It's hard to say because we'll have to wait to see. Once the nav center opens, I can tell you just here recently, the number of summonses and complaints from the Hart team has increased because we, specifically when we rolled out the program, we were being very intentional and only making charges that were in areas where the specific sign was posted eligible for the program. We have since expanded it. It's anybody that comes in contact with the Hart, APD Hart team is now eligible for the Hart program. Doesn't necessarily have to be where signs are posted, it can be anywhere and so it's been expanded. When we rolled it out in February, we had two locations, as you know. It was down in 225 Nylah and 225 Hart where the signs were posted. We didn't get that many summons because people were seeing the signs and they weren't there, right? We did get 15 in about a four-month period and then expanded. And so just here recently, within the last, September and so far in October, we've had 16 summonses and complaints already issued, which doubled the number that we had in February.
Counselor Harcourt.
Okay, so you were saying before that the only people that are Hart eligible are the people that are at the Hart locations, but now you've expanded that, so it's anyone that is encountered by the APD Hart team at all. But it's still unclear to me, A, why it has to be that team specifically in order to get access to these resources and B, like again, how are those criteria then different than the Wellness Court other than the fact that they're being encountered by certain officers and not others? Is there any other difference in criteria now? Well, the multiple summons and complaint, I guess is the only other difference between the two programs at this point.
Really to decide the question of the budget.
Okay, then I have a proposal that we move the Hart Court funds to non-departmental pending the court serving a different function than the Wellness Court.
Mayor Portail.
I want to ask Judge Day for his guidance on that because this, literally these things are coming into formation.
Sure.
Judge, the only concern that I have is that it is funded, that there's money available for the work that we do. Built the program for the specific correction improvement that council said we need a program that allows for this, we built the program that needs to be funded so that we can do the work that this program does.
I would be opposed to that. I mean, I really think this is a new program and we need to see it to its fruition and then we can certainly make changes to it. Is that, are you offering an motion?
Well, I guess so Judge Day, to clarify, one of those staff members would be across all Wellness, Treatment and Teen Courts. So that one I wouldn't argue, but the funds, yeah, for Hart Court, so the other FTE, I would advocate to put that in non-departmental pending the actual increase in cases that's anticipated.
Counselor Harcourt.
Just clarification, how many, I thought it was just one and a half under Hart.
It is.
Yeah.
So I'm saying the half that covers all, that stays and the one.
The half is the one that floats between Wellness and Hart.
I would object. How do we handle this?
I think it's two, five votes.
Five votes to put the change on board. Please identify if you're in support of the Coons motion. Okay, so three have arisen.
Yeah, I just, can we just look at this later? Like, I mean, I think, you know, valid points, but maybe look at data as we should rest.
Yeah.
Okay, so seeing that five hasn't arisen, now I want to go on the board. Is there any, all those in favor of putting judicial on the board, please signify by raising your hand.
Just approving the budget.
Be approving the budget, you mean?
What's that?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah, you said putting on the board.
Putting on the board is approving it.
Oh, we're not, we're not putting it on.
Right.
Just any changes, no changes, you guys are.
No changes, okay. Public defender.
Thank you.
Yes, we're still morning. I'm Elizabeth Kidd, I'm here to answer any questions for you that you may have. Yes?
Questions, Elizabeth.
Again, along the same, oh, sorry, along the same lines of the decrease in domestic violence cases, you don't show any reductions. You are at 17, I think, FTEs, 17 and a half. So, I mean, I would, you have mentioned before that that's 60% of your caseload, so why wouldn't you have a reduction to reflect that decrease in workload?
So a couple of things. And I think City Attorney Schulte sort of answered this a little bit, but it's actually not 60% of our caseload. Our caseload is, and I just ran the numbers while we were sitting here, but whether or not I include cases that are in an FTA status, so people who have not appeared for court and are on warrant or not, we're actually 72 to 74% non-domestic violence cases in our caseload. What you're thinking about is associated with the workload. So when we did the workload study and they looked at the annual hours spent overall, 60% of the hours spent in a year were spent on domestic violence cases versus non-domestic violence cases. We're not, we have not yet seen a reduction in either overall time spent on our caseload or in that breakdown. Okay, so, and that's, I think, simply a matter of time. It's October, we just stopped seeing new cases as of July.
Right.
I would mirror everything, I hate to be non, I mean, to be generic and follow the lead of what you've heard, but I think it's true that we really won't know the impact until these cases work their way through our system. So I would pair what you've heard also from the city attorney, what I believe you heard from court administration, probably the judge at some point, maybe not today, but we expect a solid 10 to 18 months that it will take for these cases to work their way out. As that occurs, so maybe quarter two of next year, we'll have a good idea of how that reduces two things, right? One is going to be the overall caseload and then two is going to be the overall, both the overall hours worked and that breakdown in time. Because what's happening right now is, in any reduction or what I expect to see happen is as the amount of time we spend on domestic violence cases goes down, that time that we spend on non-domestic violence cases will go up, right? Until the overall number of cases.
I guess I don't.
Comes down.
I guess I don't follow that necessarily because domestic violence cases take more time, traffic cases don't take much time.
Yep.
You don't defend if it's, if there's no jail time involved. So if they're not facing jail, you don't, right? So, I mean, I did a Google search on domestic violence cases at the municipal court level and I thought it said three months pretty much, everybody's like, I don't know where this 10, 12 months is coming from. I mean, some of them are in warrants, are warrants, some of them are in collection, some of them already have been adjudicated.
But you're not getting any new cases, correct?
No, she's not getting any since July 1.
I mean, I get that it takes a while for these to get through the system, but if you're not getting any new cases, there has to be, I mean, the volume of work has to go down.
And it has gone down in the case of the judge, it has gone down in the case of the court administrator, it has gone down in the city attorney's office. Everyone is making cuts, you know, I guess I expected out of your FTEs to see some cuts. So I'm going to propose, I was going to propose four cuts, to cut four FTEs, but in light of this information, I would suggest that we cut two FTEs and that was, that is my proposal.
Can I just answer a couple of other things that you pointed out? Because I actually don't think that the city attorney has cuts based on DBs. I think what they said was that they would be looking at not filling an open position, perhaps more than that, coming into next year. I would ask for the same time, that the, in the case of the court administrator, you actually, I think, asked yourself during the presentation a couple of weeks ago, that about how the positions that had already been cut were positions that weren't filled and had remained.
But not all three.
Vacant.
They're cutting three FTEs, so I think there was one vacancy that they were not filling, or maybe two, but they did make cuts. I, I'm sorry, I just, I don't need any more explanation. I'm proposing to cut two FTEs and I would like a vote on that.
And then move by Counselor Harcourt, second by Counselor Hank Clark to reduce the public defenders.
By two FTEs by July 1, so not like immediate.
By July 1.
By July 1. Because that's a whole year.
Well, that should be, it might be even greater than two.
It might be greater than two, but I'm just proposing two to be effective July 1. That gives, that's a whole year of decline of domestic violence cases.
Okay. Move by Counselor Harcourt, second by Counselor Hank Clark, discussion?
Yeah, so just a follow-up question from this, so you see every in custody individual that comes into the court. Are there any areas that you've been seeing increases in in custody cases?
Sure. I mean, this year, we've definitely seen an increase in people that are in jail for trespass, camping ban, those kinds of offenses. I'd say shoplifting has increased, but probably not as much recently. I'd have to look back at the actual data, I'm sure Judge might know better off the top of his head, I don't, I can't speak to that. But either way, the, those increases, I mean, I think, don't necessarily, it's true that we don't, we haven't seen the increases in DBs. We won't see increases in DBs in custody, but we still have to do the workload of all of the in custody matters. And again, I think it's important not to overlook that while we may not have, we may not be projecting a decrease right now in the FTEs, we also have three FTEs that had been stripped and set aside in non-departmental based on workload numbers that we have justified twice, that demonstrated our current workload actually justifies two additional FTE and we are not asking to add those FTE because we expect that there will be a decline with the DB. So it's a net savings.
Further discussion. Counselor Harcourt.
And so even if the folks that are in custody for camping ban violations, trespassing, et cetera, go to Hart Court, you still first see them while they're in custody?
Correct.
Further discussion, Mayor Portail.
I just want to make a comment that I certainly would love to see more shoplifting cases coming for you. It's really ruining retail in our city. It stinks to go to Walmart and have the underwear and the socks locked up.
Oh, God.
As a small example, right? But we have to make a concerted effort to curb shoplifting and so I'm hoping that you see more in your court and hopefully the workload.
Further discussion. Seeing nine, a question before us is the adoption of the Bergen motion. Counselor Harcourt.
If we don't make a decision, like I feel like this is premature. At minimum, I just don't agree with the decision. I think there's plenty of workload as been, that has been demonstrated to maintain the current staffing levels, but if we don't make a change today, when would be the next opportunity? When we actually have an opportunity for data to bear out, to see the impacts of our decisions? When's the next budget opportunity?
So spring supplemental, so sort of I think in the probably March-April timeframe is typically when we do the spring supplemental.
That's right.
I mean, would you be open to pushing the decision until then? Like, just to see where the data falls? Like, I, can I make a, would you?
That would be fine.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so, okay, so you're pulling your, your motion.
I will bring it back.
I believe you.
I will bring it back. So, I'm sorry.
Please.
Yeah, I will wait till the spring supplemental, but I would like some data.
Yes, of course.
And I would like you to really work on, you know, looking at your, your workload and
Absolutely. And I'm happy to get with you even if, if you like, so that I can be sure that the data that you want to see were provided, in the way that you want to see it, and I'll follow up with you on that.
Councilor Hancock.
I just wanted to make note that, you know, all of the departments have done some personnel reductions. They, they're all putting skin in the game here in terms of cost savings and that, and I don't feel that this office is doing, has done that. And, and in the spirit of trying to, you know, be more aware of the expenses, keep taking into account the reduction of DV cases and others things, I just feel like the Public Defender's Office should take a hard look at doing more with less, like everybody else in the city is doing.
Mayor.
Councilor Hancock.
Just kind of as a point of information, they have been, like, council didn't fund their increases when we added Weekend Court, and has since not, the Public Defender's Office has not asked for any increases since then either. So they've been doing more with less this whole time.
Is there, please signify support for the Public Defender budget?
With the spring supplemental. It will come to the spring.
That's right. Okay. Okay. More than six have arisen, sorry. Communications.
To start off, before we get into the departments, all of my departments are not proposing any additions or amendments to their budget, and they have all participated in the operational reductions across the board, and have contributed towards the, I think roughly $10 million in operational reductions that we had to meet our balancing, our budget balancing efforts this year. And of course, will all participate in the four mandatory workload days in 2026. It's really with each department, if you have specific questions.
Good morning. We only have any changes, we've just used reductions as a way to kind of reprioritize and be more efficient, so nothing additional to add. I'm going to ask you the questions.
The questions? All in favor? All in favor of Communications question?
Thank you.
Finance? A lot of bad news coming on here.
When do we want to start?
If you want to look at the actual reductions, start on FTE 7.
Any questions, Teresa?
No, it's good.
No questions. Well, all those in favor of the Finance question?
I've called a version.
You've called her Teresa. You have to, and I'll go by anything.
Teresa's are, are controlled, or, uh, treasured, so yeah.
Close, so I was close. That's why you got a puzzle hook there. Okay. Housing Community Services. Jessica Prosser is on the menu.
Yep.
Any questions?
Councilmember Coons, and Councilmember Burton.
Yeah, so I was just wondering, looking at our federal grant funds, we did have a slight increase in light of the current grant cancellations that have been specifically targeting Colorado. Do we anticipate any decreases, or are those formula funds safe from that type of action?
So specifically for HUD funds, funding community development work, we've had some slight variation, one down, someone up. We feel confident we got our grant agreements for the current funding year, which we get in the summer of 2025, which then extends for a whole year there. So the next time we would have any uncertainty would be next summer around what our amounts would be moving forward. And then the other federal funds we have in our department right now, our Department of Justice, and those also, we have full access to our funds, and we have two years still left on those funds. Thank you.
Further questions?
Thank you. Just under the budget, there's, there's the $2 million that goes to Advance. Is that, that comes out of the Marijuana Reserve?
So that $2 million is coming through both, so part of it's coming from the General Fund under the Camping Ordinance funding, and then part of it's coming out of Marijuana Funds. So it's about a million each from each funding bucket.
Okay, so I guess I, I thought before, when we had Day Resource Center, that the $2 million was being allocated out of the Marijuana Funds. Why would we take it out of General Fund?
Just because of the Camping Ordinance specifically is for funding things related to people experiencing homelessness being out of encampments and into a shelter space. So we were previously using some of that money also to fund the pallet shelters, we fund the abatement services with that, and so it aligns well with the Camping Ordinance of saying, no camping, but you have to essentially go to shelters, so that's where that's coming from. The rest of the Marijuana Funds are going to fund things still, like family sheltering, so we do a small notice of funding each year, and so those, those other Marijuana Funds are funding things besides just the navigation campus.
Okay, so the $2.146 out of Marijuana is going for partly Advance and partly Comitus or whatever?
Correct. Other, other agencies that we fund.
Okay, and then out of the nine FTEs, I'm always confused on why we have nine FTEs, because Advance is supposed to be basic, I thought they were, we were going to reduce our FTEs because of Advance's contract to take care of, of, you know, what used to be under the Day Resource Center.
Yes.
So, oh, go ahead.
Do you have more to your question?
Well, yeah, I guess in combination, because also KESM does the abatements.
Correct.
So aren't, don't they have FTEs on the contract? How many do they have on the, so, yeah, go ahead.
So, first, the Advance piece, so we are funding Advance as the operator of the navigation campus. So our FTE staff are not moving to go work at the navigation campus, they're continuing to do what they do here, which is program management, data analysts. Advance is not doing street outreach, they're also not covering abatements on our side. So we have abatement team that works with the Hart team in the Police Department, we have an outreach team that does field case management, referring people, driving people, so Advance is only focused on the navigation campus. Our FTEs at the city will be continuing to do what they've been doing, which is things like contract oversight and the things I just mentioned. So that's why Advance has their staff that will be fully operationalizing the navigation campus, similar to the Day Resource Center. We never had staff at the Day Resource Center either. We were funding them, that we do all the compliance, you know, reporting and all of that stuff. And then KESM is a separate contract as well, and so I don't know the number of people they have on their crews, they usually have one to two crews working each day with a couple of people on each crew. We could get you that information, but that's under just a contract with them.
So I guess what, what is it that we do versus KESM? They, they are doing the abatements, what is our, what are our FTEs doing?
So our abatement crew is overseeing KESM, they're also posting the properties, so that we are trying to get people to move before we get there and take their stuff with them, refer them to shelter, and so they're overseeing that. They also take in all of the complaints through Access Aurora when they come in, they funnel council requests when they come in, so we know where to go to do the abatements. They also collaborate heavily with the Hart team in the Police Department, with par officers, with businesses, they work with code enforcement, so we know if it's private or public property, they figure out, they go out, somebody says, hey, there's an encampment over here somewhere, right? In a park or on a trail, they go identify it, they know exactly where to go, so they can communicate with KESM to know exactly where to go to be efficient.
And then the last, the $750,000, $750,000 that supports the Navigation Center for housing assistance, why is that not just, I mean, we already do the housing assistance, and we already have FTEs doing that, so why do we need to supplement Advance?
The 750
It says supports Navigation Center referrals, but we already do that.
Yeah, so we have housing vouchers associated with the navigation campus that we got from the state, when the state gave us money to purchase the building, so those are vouchers coming from the state, so some of that's grant money that's
Okay, so it's not out of General Fund?
Correct.
Okay, so, so I have been saying the wrong thing to my constituents when they ask me how much we spend on homeless services, I typically say around $2,000, $2.5 million.
Yes.
I should be saying $7 million.
Correct, but that's because we've leveraged other funding. We also have grants and things.
Yeah, I, I've been here over nine years, and the amount of money that we spend on the homelessness has obviously increased significantly. I'm not saying I'm, I'm against the services that we're doing, because I think it's good to obviously, you know, help them be in a better position with addiction services and so forth, but it is quite a
That is true. With the Marijuana Funds, we added some when we did the Camping Ordinance, we have other grant funding.
Thank you.
We are getting a lot of, we are raising a lot of money to available homeless services. What do you think we're from foundations, I think Andrew's Foundation, Daniel's Fund.
Oh.
That's going directly to Advance for operations.
Oh, okay, so those funds would not offset our budget?
Typically, wouldn't be a pass for, for those funds, if something like HUD wanted to fund the navigation campus, it probably would be a pass for those funds.
And there, is that a possibility with, with potential legislation at the Congress on allocating, or being able, you know, obviously, we're not a housing-first model, so if Congress were to change that criteria, then we could apply for grant money.
What we're preliminarily seeing from HUD is some competitive funding coming out for homelessness that we would be well aligned to get based on the program put together for the navigation.
And that could decrease our, our, okay, thank you.
I think we have Secretary for HUD coming out on November 6. Anything else, any other questions, Congress? Thank you, Jessica.
You should look into my, you know, department.
Did I just say any opposition?
I know, I did.
Oh, any opposition to Housing Community Services?
And then before we jump into HR, Keith caught me, we were trying to heat the room up, you know, sweat you guys out, I apologize, so I've been caught out. We have facilities looking at it to try and crank up the air conditioning, so, working on that.
Human Resources?
Morning.
Morning. Are we still morning?
It is, it's only a little bit morning.
Like Roberto said, we're not making any adds to our, our budgets, and we are participating in all of those budget reductions for 2026, so happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Human Resources? Say, is there any opposition to Human Resources' budget? Right, thank you.
That's not fair, come back up here.
Exactly.
Okay, Information Technology.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Scott Newham, any questions? Again, same, as many housing cuts, so, questions?
So, I don't know, Chupi, I just had a brain fart right there. About information technology as it relates to the courts and, and bringing them up to speed and getting us into the, you know, 21st century, are those going to be tenured under this group, or is it going to still remain separate?
So, the ordinance is effective on October 11th, I'll be sitting down with the court staff. I know I've heard those concerns from council in the past, right now, Court's IT has four staff that are dedicated to supporting Court's IT, and so we'll be having discussions with them around, as we integrate them into the city manager's operations, what that looks like, so those are discussions that we'll be having coming up. And also, Councilmember Hancock, technology upgrades, probably I think what you're talking about.
Yes.
They're not going to be part of this budget, because I, once we make that plan, Jason and I will work with you all to get the information that you need and talk about what the modernization process will look like.
And you'll have the timelines, and we'll have the requirements that we need, and definitely laid out as to the needs of what the courts are going to have, are going to need to have, and the requirements clearly laid out, is that something that will be happening in the first quarter?
It'll be, because of the, I will tell you that, because of the, the audit issue and everything else that came up, Jason and I have been looking at, you know, trying to help rectify that situation where we can get some controls and some auditing done over in court administration, and I know that Jason and I have talked that we're going to move on that pretty quickly, probably in Q4 of this year.
But it's not impact on this year's budget?
Not on this year's budget, it'll be something that we add next year, but we'll, there's, there's other money, Jason's very good at finding money when, when we need it, I'll give him that, as he's smiling, but I, I think we're going to loop in, once we loop in court staff, court admin, about what our thoughts are, I mean, obviously, it's going to be, they're going to be necessary participants, obviously, but we hope to get some resolution on that pretty quick.
Thank you.
Councilor Hancock.
Mayor, yes, so there are three different buckets of ongoing cuts, and so I just was hoping you could help us understand what those are, the information asset management support cuts due to data center consolidation and cuts replaced by other solutions.
I'm sorry, the last one was
Cuts replaced by other solutions.
Yes, so actually, the first two, well, actually, the in-force asset management, so the Water Department has switched over to another product called Oxygen, and they are in the process of implementing that long-term plan, is that all city business units will eventually bolt onto that. But right now, the existing system in Florida is status quo, there's not any additional upgrades, there's not high-end additional functions in future, so, I believe it was February-ish, we worked with Water, and we reached out to the various users, and we said, look, we're just going to keep things status quo, there's really no need to continue to pay this vendor for ongoing support, compliant, but, but not for these two, so that's part of that reduction. Right now, the existing system is being for exclusively, correct, the water's budget, but in future years, we plan to, in, in use of that system, we would like to additional planning for those departments, and specifically, apologize, Councilmember
Right, data center consolidation.
Yes, so on that one, we have annual contracts to support all of our equipment across the board, and by migrating to the new data center where you're replacing a lot of equipment, that data center move has been funded through a capital program, a five-year lease, and so operating funds that we're paying for those old systems were able to be eliminated because, and we are in process right now of decommissioning those systems, the ongoing cost of the new systems are paid through that five-year capital lease that we're paying out, so we do still have a cost on the capital side, but on the general fund side, right, I'm sorry, out of operating, that's been reduced.
And then, sorry, the final one was the cuts replaced by other solutions, is that the workday, all the migration that staff have been doing?
Correct. In general, we've identified a number of different areas where, yes, with, with the workday, and then several other systems that we've been rolling out, more modern platforms, we're able to say there's a lot of standalone independent systems that didn't have a lot of use anyway, we're able to start retiring those and migrating those solutions over to more modern platforms.
Heard the questions? Councilmember Lawson, I'm sorry.
Scott, I just have a question for you, as we're moving into the technology, and I don't see anything in here in your budget at all, but how are you guys moving towards AI? And kind of the implementation within the city, I mean, I do think it's something you're going to have to look at, but I don't see anything in your budget for anything that's with AI possibilities.
Now, that's very good call, Councilmember, we do not have anything in the budget specifically for AI, especially since this is a reduction year. We don't, we would, we would request to have additional funds for additional standard program to be able to do that. Now, I will say that various vendors that we already have entered a contract with, so Microsoft, the Microsoft platform, Workday itself, the Invisio platform, a number of others, we are incorporating some AI capabilities, some of the 911 systems, there's a lot of different systems that we have in place that the vendors, through their natural upgrade process, are starting to include.
Because I know within the court systems and some of the stuff, I mean, I just in the private sector, I know I deal, they have like Westlaw AI, they have a lot of implement, and I understand it's a budget thing, but it seems like on some of these things, I guess some of the platforms, I'm just trying to see where that integration will occur, so.
Yeah, we, we are already working on it with a number of staff across the city that are, I mean, the AI steering committee, where we can advise on, hey, here's existing capabilities the vendors already have. capabilities the vendors already have, bring to bear, how can we most effectively leverage those and use those across the city. But down the road, as I, because every day it's evolving.
Okay.
So we would like to continue to support that.
Thank you.
And councilmember Lawson, that's a good, good point. We are actively engaged with Westlaw on their AI for use in my office. We're looking at the, the funding and the, but if we, if needed.
The license.
Yeah, it depends, but it's, I, I'm wary. I do have, I did put out an AI policy in my office earlier this year. I'm wary with some of the issues that have come up with verifying information, but good points, but I think a lot more to come on that.
Okay.
Further, councilmember.
Yeah, just on the AI, because I, I think with discussions with Laura Perry, we were looking at potentially, I don't know if anything's moved on that, but using AI to help us in the planning development process as we're working with developers to speed up, look at duplicative code and any conflicting code, things like that. So I think, you know, whether it be in that department or any department, the investment would be obviously welcomed if we can make sure that it's all, you know, secure and so forth. But I think it will create a lot of efficiencies.
Yes.
Just on the prod, on the outside vendors, so you said that you, if you won't renew those if they're, if you're not using them?
Correct.
Okay.
So a substantial portion of our budget is what's called mandatory costs, which are those ongoing year-on-year agreements to support and maintain a system. So if we're no longer using a system, regardless of department in the city, we eliminate that and we get the budget reduction.
Are you doing an analysis, though, of, of what value those outside vendors bring versus in-house?
We are working with the business units, IT specifically. We do not have the capacity to go system by system and ask that, but as part of our data center move, we are already having to pick up and move every application to a new data center anyway. So we are actively engaging with the business units, say, do you really still need this application? Is it really still providing the value you thought it would? Is there something better that we can put in place instead?
Thank you.
Further questions? Is there any objection to the information technology budgets? Seeing none, then we'll accept that. Thank you.
Is this an unusual scenario? I can't get started.
Yes and no. I think I was reached out. No, there's no. I just wanted to.
Yeah, I was hoping to talk to him about the FIC board.
That's what you're talking for here. Gotcha. Interesting.
We're back to order.
So I explained.
Development Services, Jacob Cox.
Laurie, you got any preamble for the whole group or anything?
Oh, yeah.
I can go through each one.
Okay.
So Development Services, recap on Development Services. We've seen a reduction in Development Review Fund this year to 2.5 million dollars. We've taken proactive actions to address that through three different ways. One, reducing contracted expenditures for plan review. Two, we will be charging customers the credit card fee that the city has officially been absorbing on behalf of customers and review submittals. So that charge will be coming forward later next year, 2026. We have been working with Aurora Water to phase drainage review expenditures from Development Review Fund to Water. And the third is continually vacant positions and personnel actions. A lot of that primarily impacts Development Services, planning and business development.
Questions for Development Services? Councilman Berger.
Laurie, do we have any vacancies, like critical vacancies, that we need to fill in there?
We've been monitoring that and we have been filling critical. But we, each director takes a look at workload every month, performance metrics, how are we doing on on-time metrics? Overall, we've maintained 95% average on time. So it's kind of part of our conversation, but we're mindful of the financial realities, monitoring everything coming in, and how we continue to keep up with workload. Thank you.
Okay, Jacob, anything?
No, any questions for me in terms of?
Questions for Jacob Cox, Development Services.
We need 10 of you.
Okay.
Okay, no, great job. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much.
Any objection on the budget for Development Services? Seeing none, then Library and Cultural Services.
So we have Ginger White here today to answer any questions about Library and Cultural Services. Two major reductions. One, we are reducing the number of productions for Aurora Fox next year. That's resulted in an expenditure reduction of $10,000. We are also reducing the operating hours for Aurora Fox. With that, we are adding an admissions charge, which will generate more revenues.
It should be soon.
Sorry, thank you. It should be soon. And then for Library and Cultural Services, there is a $25,000 reduction in programming within their budget, coupled with citywide reductions for furloughs, training, and travel.
Any questions for me for Library and Cultural Services?
Library and Cultural Services, Ginger White, yeah. Go ahead.
Do we ever charge for late books?
We don't. We do not. This was a few years ago prior to my time, and we suspended that practice, as do most library systems.
Okay. So how do we recoup for books that never come back?
We don't really. I mean, we do have a credit service we can use to go back for those, but we have a pretty low lossage when it comes to our library system. So we don't have, that's not a big drain for our budget. Yeah.
Further questions? Thanks, you did a great job, Ginger White. Thank you. Any objection to Library and Cultural Services? Seeing none, okay. Parks, Recreation, and Open Space?
So Pro's budget this year, Brian Green answering questions. So council had extensive conversations at the Spring Workshop earlier this year around the Recreation Fund. We are reducing the Recreation Fund transfer from the General Fund by 1.5 million. We have also reallocated personnel expenditures from the General Fund to other funds that Pro's manages. And we are also, for the Golf Fund, increasing the appropriation by 3 million to solve some deferred maintenance and equipment needs.
And then in line with that, we signed you all up involuntarily for hot yoga. So you all owe $25 after this. So Brian's going to be collecting it out there. So there you go.
Can we contribute?
I hate to see that.
Can we contribute to not have the mayor do hot yoga?
It's a bad visual. Okay.
One question.
Yeah, Councilman Berger.
Just in terms of the Field House at Southeast, are we seeing more participation so that we're?
Much more. Yeah, we're really focusing on program there. It's $60,000 over last year.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Thank you.
Any objection to Parks, Recreation, and Open Space budget? Okay. Planning and Business Development?
Okay, we have Janine Rustic here answering any questions. Planning Business Development, we're primarily the citywide reductions in training and travel and furloughs.
Questions of Janine?
I know we had a couple vacancies with Andrea Aminak leaving, retiring. Have we filled the, I know we're splitting the position, but have we filled the role on that she primarily did?
Well, we filled urban renewal. We've had to go back out on Business Development, but with the one role filled, I am stepping in and being more active with the Business Development to make sure that we move things along. Thank you.
Further questions? Is there any objection to Planning and Business Development? Seeing none, then we'll go with that. Public Works?
All right. It's our new Director of Public Works, Mr. Kurt Wallmeyer. So Public Works had two major reductions. So one, our citywide facilities custodial services contract, we had almost a $470,000 reduction there, as well as vacancy savings for non-critical positions with no impact to street maintenance or any of our other critical maintenance services provided by Public Works.
Questions of Public Works?
I have a comment. I just want to say thank you. I've seen a lot of constituents are very thankful for what you're doing.
Do you have anything compliment for me?
And I've heard a few things.
Is there any objection to adopting Public Works budget? Okay, seeing none, we'll adopt them. Thank you. Okay. Jason Vassler.
All right, so we're through our public safety group. We're going to start with Tina Bonetta and our Aurora 911 Call Answering Center. I'll turn it over to Tina.
Hello, everyone. Our cuts this year are in our training and professional development budget, and all of our non-operational team members, so everyone other than the people who are in the service will experience the four furlough days this year as well.
The one thing I will add also is we are coming to you all here, Scott's not here, is it next, the 22nd?
This Monday.
Yeah, this coming Monday. You should see something on your calendar to increase the monthly 911 surcharge that will allow us to kind of stay up with that. And then we are moving $1.5 million of expenses from the General Fund to the E911 Fund. So that is another significant portion of our balancing actions here. No impact to their services, small increase from a dollar amount, I think it's about 20-some cents a month for the call line, but that does allow us to move an additional $1.5 billion from the General Fund to the E911 Fund.
How do the furlough days?
That's my question.
Would you just like to answer 911 for four days?
Well, they're not. So the furlough days will not impact our emergency communication specialist or our operations supervisors, and so those individuals will remain untouched. It's all of the support services. So all of the administrative support, myself, our professional development team, quality assurance, and our digital records team are impacted by the furloughs.
You will still take an emergency phone call?
Correct. Yeah.
Oh, we're sorry.
Call back tomorrow.
Those people's furloughs would require overtime to backfill their positions, and so it's cost prohibitive.
Well, the way you said it, we looked at each other like, what?
Oh, we didn't hear "non."
Oh, yeah, we didn't hear the "non" before.
When I come next time, you said before I need to answer the phone.
Yes, sir.
I'm having nightmares.
We have a very robust training.
For the mayor, okay. Okay, further questions? Okay, is there any objection to adopting the Aurora 911 budget? Seeing none, thank you.
All right, we could not get all the way through the budget without a change. This is going to be your first change. Greg, go ahead and bring it up. Chief Otten's going to go here. So on the fire side, we had told you that we had applied for the SAFER grant. We just found out that unfortunately, we were, we did not receive the SAFER grant.
Boo!
So we want to let you know what that is going to be. So what we're going to do operationally, well, from the budget side, I'll walk you through. Since we had it built in, we're going to have to reverse that. And then operationally, what that means is that we're going to proceed with opening Station 18 in the Aurora Highlands in 2026. We're going to push Station 19 in Blackstone and South Shore, that area, out to 2027. We can't, we can't do those without the grant assistance. So we will do that, and so then we're going to have to adjust the pro forma. So next slide, it's going to be kind of three steps there. So in yellow is the first step. What we have to do is we essentially have to back out our assumption that we were going to receive the grant. So at the top there, those are the impacts.
I think you jinxed it.
I probably did. It's my fault, not the chief's. And so the, we're going to have to back out the grant match. So we'll take out the match funds in '26 and '27. We had equipment for both stations in 2026. We're going to back that out, and then we're going to back out the apparatus again for both stations. You see that there in light green? You'll see that we're then adding in the full funding in the General Fund for Station 18 in the Aurora Highlands. So you'll see the full accompaniment of personnel. That's 2.3 million in '26. That grows to '27, grows to '28. We have to add the equipment for those folks in '26, and then we have to have the apparatus for them in '26. And then you'll see for the Blackstone station, Station 19, you'll see that repeated in '27, and then each of those carrying through. You'll, and at the very bottom, you'll see us negating the gifts and grants. So that's where we had planned on receiving that $2.5 million of grant funding in 2026. That's not happening, so we'll back that out of the gifts and grants. And you'll see the net effect there. So it's a net effect of an additional $1.169 million in '26, an additional $4.2 million in '27, and an additional $2.6 million in 2028. Go to the next slide. So then what you're going to see here is the top line is, that was sort of essentially what the bottom line looked like of the General Fund. We were balanced in '26. We were about $2.1 million in the hole, $3.2 million from balanced. And then with the adjustments that I just walked you through, so that $1.16 in '26, the $4.2 million in '27, the $2.6 million in '28, you're going to see that ripple through. So essentially what that means for 2026 is we're going to be using an additional $1.69 million of recession reserve. We still have 2/3 of our recession reserve in hand, and then we have the Blackstone station planned for '27 and beyond. So that is the plan. That is my recommendation, and I will be asking for six of you all to allow us to make that change and indicate so here in a second. And Chief and I will answer any questions you all have.
Councilman Berger.
Of course, Blackstone is pushed back again. So we're going to use, hopefully approve, reserve fund to move forward with the Aurora Highlands for 2026. Would we be looking at possibly using reserve funds for Blackstone in 2027?
We will, yeah. I think that's one of the things if we have to, in terms of when we're looking at that, you know, at that point, as you'll see there, we're showing about $6 million of balancing action. So right now that we would need to balance with the assumption that we have the fire station in there. And so obviously, we've told you all that I'm approaching the use of those reserve funds kind of in a two- to three-year timeframe. So we'll see where revenues are, but I think a part of this, we're planning on using about, you know, maybe half of that would see, you know, as much as we'd use this year. So we could use some reserves next year, probably not entirely, but we plan to balance the budget with the assumption that Blackstone is getting.
And just, I just want to make a point, because obviously the reason, I'm really disappointed with, all of us are, that we didn't get the SAFER grant, because I think it was well done in terms of what was proposed, and we obviously had our data on response times for the two stations, the two areas that our response times are not adequate. And obviously, we're talking about life savings for our residents that impacts them. So my question is, is there a temporary solution for Blackstone? In the interim, we do have permanent land space, and then we have a temporary land dedication. I think the temporary one is in Blackstone and the permanent is in South Shore. Is there any way to have a smaller vehicle with some minimal staffing in case a critical incident happens that they could first respond and then, based on 13 and 14 stations having availability if they're not on call, to then backfill, you know, supplement that call?
We can certainly evaluate that model. One of the challenges, that vehicle will be housed the same distance away as the other companies, because we've got three companies right now that serve that here primarily. We can look at it. I don't know that that's going to speed up the response times. One of the things that...
If we build a temporary house?
And that's one of the things that Jason and I will talk about, is depending on the level of support for this pathway forward, we can start now kind of looking at the capital infrastructure for that, so that as soon as the money comes hot for the people, that we're ready to move forward. I think that could be the way that we bridge that gap or shorten that time.
And help we get it. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Cox.
Do we have like a capital match of that 2.5 million that we could look at for that kind, to use for that type of temporary?
So we have capital impact fees, and so that's one of the things we're going to be looking at for us. We go to bring in, bring online both the Aurora Highland station and the Blackstone station. We're going to be looking at those capital impact fees to essentially provide the cap...
Transportation?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me just say, sometimes we do not have, we only have a transportation impact fee on residential, we don't have one on commercial. And that'd be speaking of services.
The impact fees are by area, right?
Correct.
Okay, so those would be kept for?
We have sufficient funding in the southeast, one in the counties here. I don't know what the exact balance is, but we've looked at it to make sure that we have sufficient funding, at least for the temporary right now, for the final product, the permanent fire station. That'll be a question for later on.
That's one of the things we're working through.
On the infrastructure program and that master plan.
Yeah, I mean, just for the public's knowledge, the impact fees are assessed per home, and obviously...
At that time of construction, new construction, yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Cox.
So my only other question, and this is maybe a little bit more general, is that we would have $6 million more in the budget but for the repeal of the OPT. So do policy decisions that reduce our revenue qualify us to use the recession reserve, which was supposed to be there for revenue issues that are caused by a recession, not by us making poor policy decisions?
Let me ask you a question.
That's a question. It's a question. Are we allowed to use a recession reserve when we would have that $6 million but for a policy decision that we made? It's a question.
We think the proposed use of the recession reserve is in line with the policy set around that policy. And I agree with that.
So I want to say to Denver, where they didn't have the discipline to maintain reserves. And so tell me about how we're going to replenish that.
Yeah, so right now, we're, again, we started at about $28 million. This will probably pull it down closer to 18, 19?
18.
18 million. So we still have significant reserves in the recession reserve, and that's on top of all of our other reserves. So we have our policy reserve, we have our taper reserve, so we're meeting our other reserve requirements. And then as we come out of this recession, we've already been talking about, we will refill that reserve in accordance with the policy that council has laid out. And again, part of this is that, to your point, Mayor, we don't, you're not going to see me come forward in 2027 and say, if that, if that number stays at, you know, 6.3 million out of balance, you're not going to see me say, hey, good news, we're just going to use 100% of the... We're being recorded now. Yeah. So you're not going to see me stand up and say, good news, we can just use recession reserves. And so we would, recession reserves might be a part of that balancing for 2027, but it's not going to be solely on that.
So when we went to DC to lobby for the fire trucks...
Does that mean we don't get that either?
No, we did. We were successful in our congressionally-directed spending request. That includes funding for another fire apparatus, so we are using that for another one. So we were successful in that. We were successful in the flashover simulator, and we were successful in drones for our fire department, yeah, first responders.
Can we apply again? Or was it for the same?
Well, we'll wait, yes, we will wait to see what programs got funded. We will try and ask the questions as to why we didn't get funded, so we haven't done that deep dive on that, but those are things that we will be doing.
Yeah, okay. Councilman Berger.
We will continue to apply for the SAFER grant for staffing every year. And so it's an annual process. It'll open again in the spring, and we'll shoot.
Further questions? Okay, seeing none, is there any objection to the fire budget, AFR budget?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, actually, yeah, if I could get, if I could get six votes for you as amended, just to make sure that, again, because we're going to make sure that that, the ordinance that's going to be presented to you all in a few weeks is going to reflect this change. I just want to make sure that there's full support for that.
Okay, very good, okay.
Thank you. Okay, and so we'll reflect that up here. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, police.
Police, so I've got Chief Chamberlain here to highlight for you all a few things that we've done in police. We have the civilian positions that we've added, but then in addition, there's a couple other adds not directly in his budget. We've done some significant adds for the Axon budget, which is housed in IT, so you did see an ad over there for that, for some additional capacity we're trying to give our officers with.
...apparatus again for both stations. You see that there in light green, you'll see that we're then adding in the full funding in the general fund for Station 18 in the Aurora Highlands. So you'll see the full accompaniment of personnel. That's 2.3 million in '26. That grows to '27, grows to '28. We have to add the equipment for those folks in '26, and then we have to have the apparatus for them in '26. And then you'll see for the Blackstone Station, Station 19, you'll see that repeated in '27, and then each of those carrying through. And at the very bottom, you'll see us negating the gifts and grants. So that's where we had planned on receiving that $2.5 million of grant funding in 2026. That's not happening, so we'll back that out of the gifts and grants. And you'll see the net effect there. So it's a net effect of an additional $1.169 million in '26, an additional $4.2 million in '27, and an additional $2.6 million in 2028. Go to the next slide. So then what you're going to see here is the top line is that was sort of essentially what the bottom line looked like of the general fund. We were balanced in '26. We were about $2.1 million in the hole, $3.2 million from balanced. And then with the adjustments that I just walked you through, so that 1.16 in '26, the $4.2 million in '27, the $2.6 million in '28, you're going to see that ripple through. So essentially what that means for 2026 is we're going to be using an additional $1.69 million of recession reserve. We still have 2/3 of our recession reserve in hand. And then we have the Blackstone Station planned for '27 and beyond. So that is the plan. That is my recommendation. And I will be asking for six of you all to allow us to make that change and indicate so here in a second. And Chief and I will answer any questions you all have.
Councilor Hocken.
Of course. Blackstone is pushed back again. So we're going to use, hopefully approve, reserve fund to move forward with the Aurora Highlands for 2026. Would we be looking at possibly using reserve funds for Blackstone in 2027?
We will, yeah. I think that's one of the things if we have to, in terms of when we're looking at that, you know, at that point, as you'll see there, we're showing about $6 million of balancing action. So right now that we would need to balance with the assumption that we have the fire station in there. And so obviously, we've told you all that I'm approaching the use of those reserve funds kind of in a two- to three-year timeframe. So we'll see where revenues are, but I think part of this, we're planning on using about, you know, maybe half of that would see, you know, as much as we'd use this year. So we could use some reserves next year, probably not entirely, but we plan to balance the budget with the assumption that Blackstone is getting.
And just, I just want to make a point, because obviously the reason, I'm really disappointed with all of us are, that we didn't get the SAFER grant, because I think it was well done in terms of what was proposed, and we obviously had our data on response times for the two stations. The two areas that our response times are not adequate. And obviously, we're talking about life savings for our residents that impacts them. So my question is, is there a temporary solution for Blackstone? In the interim, we do have permanent land space, and then we have a temporary land dedication. I think the temporary one is in Blackstone and the permanent is in South Shore. Is there any way to have a smaller vehicle with some minimal staffing in case a critical incident happens that they could first respond and then, based on 13 and 14 stations having availability if they're not on call, to then backfill, you know, supplement that call?
We can certainly evaluate that model. One of the challenges, that vehicle will be housed the same distance away as the other companies, because we've got three companies right now that serve that here primarily. We can look at it. I don't know that that's going to speed up the response times. One of the things that...
If we build a temporary house.
And that's one of the things that Jason and I will talk about is depending on the level of support for this pathway forward, we can start now looking at the capital infrastructure for that, so that as soon as the money comes hot for the people, that we're ready to move forward.
Yeah.
I think that could be the way that we bridge that gap or shorten that time.
And help we get it. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Hocken.
Do we have, like, a capital match of that $2.5 million that we could look at for that kind, to use for that type of temporary?
So we have capital impact fees, and so that's one of the things we're going to be looking at for us. We go to bring in, bring online both the Aurora Highland Station and the Blackstone Station. We're going to be looking at those capital impact fees to essentially provide the cap...
Transportation.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me just say, sometimes we do not have, we only have a transportation impact fee on residential. We don't have one on commercial. And that needs to be considered.
The impact fees are by area, right?
Correct.
Okay, so those would be kept for...
We have sufficient funding in the southeast one and the counties here. I don't know what the exact amount is, but we've looked at it to make sure that we have sufficient funding, at least for the temporary right now, for the final product, this with the permanent fire station. That'll be a question for later on.
That's one of the things we're working through.
On the infrastructure program and that master plan.
Yeah, I mean, just for the public's knowledge, the impact fees are assessed per home and obviously...
At that time of construction, new construction, yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Hocken.
So my only other question, and this is maybe a little bit more in general, is that we would have $6 million more dollars in the budget but for the repeal of the OPT. So do policy decisions that reduce our revenue qualify us to use the recession reserve, which was supposed to be there for revenue issues that are caused by a recession, not by us making poor policy decisions?
Let me ask you a question.
It's a question. Are we allowed to use a recession reserve when we would have that $6 million but for a policy decision that we made? It's a question.
That's our decision.
We think the proposed use of the recession reserve is in line with the policy set around that policy.
And I agree with that.
Yeah, so I wanted to say to you, Denver, where they didn't have the discipline to maintain reserves. And so tell me about how we're going to replenish that.
Yeah, so right now, we're, again, we started at about $28 million. This will probably pull it down closer to 18, 19?
18.
18 million. So we still have significant reserves in the recession reserve, and that's on top of all of our other reserves. So we have our policy reserve, we have our taper reserve, so we're meeting our other reserve requirements. And then as we come out of this recession, we've already been talking about, we will refill that reserve in accordance with the policy that council has laid out. And again, part of this is that, to your point, Mayor, we don't, you're not going to see me come forward in 2027 and say, if that, if that number stays at, you know, 6.3 million out of balance, you're not going to see me say, hey, good news, we're just going to use 100% of the... We're being recorded now. Yeah. So you're not going to see me stand up and say, good news, we can just use recession reserves. And so we would, recession reserves might be a part of that balancing for 2027, but it's not going to be solely on that.
Okay. And I cast my hand.
So when we went to DC to lobby for the fire trucks...
Does that mean we don't get that either?
No.
No, we did. We were successful in our congressionally-directed spending request. That includes funding for another fire apparatus, so we are using that for another one. So we were successful in that. We were successful in the flashover simulator, and we were successful in drones for our fire department, yeah, first responders.
Can we apply again? Or was it for the same...
Well, we'll wait on, yes, we will wait to see what programs got funded. We will try and ask the questions as to why we didn't get funded, so we haven't done that deep dive on that, but those are things that we will be doing.
Yeah, okay.
Councilor Hocken.
We will continue to apply for the SAFER grant for staffing every year. And so it's an annual process. It'll open again in the spring, and we'll shoot.
Further questions? Okay, seeing that, is there any objection to the fire budget, AFR budget?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, actually, yeah, if I could get, if I could get six votes for, yeah, as amended, just to make sure that, again...
Okay.
Because we're going to make sure that that, the ordinance that's going to be presented to you all in a few weeks is going to reflect this change. I just want to make sure that there's full support for that.
Okay, very good, okay.
Thank you. Okay, and so we'll reflect that up here. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, police.
Police. So I've got Chief Chamberlain here just to highlight for you all a few things that we've done in police. We have the civilian positions that we've added, but then in addition, there's a couple other ads not directly in his budget. We've done some significant ads for the Axon budget, which is housed in IT, so you did see an ad over there for that, for some additional capacity we're trying to give our officers with report drafting and some other things like that. And then also, in the capital projects fund, we have funding set aside to stand up a pilot program around drones as first responders. And so that's something that we're going to become to you all with more details here in the coming weeks, but it is in the budget as we continue to make sure that we have robust crime-fighting ability. Chief, take it away. Any questions?
Yeah. Councilor Hocken.
Thank you, Chief. I think I asked this last time about being fully staffed and whether we had enough par officers and SROs. I think you said yes for per district. However, I've been here a while, and we used to have actually more par officers in, per area. So from my perspective, I see, I don't see it fully staffed. So do you foresee that being, you know, mitigated in the coming year?
And I'm hopeful. I'm a realistic, but I'm also very optimistic about it, too. And again, staffing is without question one of our major concerns. We have gone, over this past year, incredibly far than where we were. I think by January of this year, we are going to actually be staffed at our authorized positions of 748. With that, we are probably going to be able to put 225 into patrol. So again, a big part of that is huge. Again, as much as I want to celebrate the 748 authorized, I want you to realize, too, as a group, that in 2020, this department was staffed to 775. So again, it's still much lower than where it was back in six years ago. The city has changed drastically. Again, if we look at national averages, we would probably be a department somewhere around 808, we're actually going to be staffed effectively. So 748 is where we are at. Again, we are in a much better place than where we were. Attrition rates are down across the board, so we are not losing as many people as we are currently. In '23, '24, we had academies that were at five. Five people would start. Right now, we are doing three academies, and they are almost full completely at about 37 to 38. The attrition rate of that has not impacted where we are at, actually did the attrition rate. In '22, we had an 8% attrition. In '23, we had a 12% attrition. In '24, we had a 9% attrition. And right now, we are at a 5% attrition rate. So again, people are not leaving. They are staying, and they are coming on and being hired. So that is really what we're focused on. The par is an incredibly important part, but the one thing that comes up, too, in the discussion that I think is important, is, again, the heart team. The heart team just took on the name of the heart team and the heart court, but I want people to realize that those are not FTE positions. When I got here a year ago, I looked at the community when I built my strategic plan, and I said, we need to have some focus on homelessness. So again, these positions that are in the heart team, we just kept the name to keep it consistent. They came out of my patrol resources. And the reason I did that is because I wanted to specifically focus and be proactive on homelessness. And again, what usually was the par teams were the ones that were connected with the heart and connected with Jessica's team. So we still have our par officers doing that, but our homeless team is actually being proactive as far as citations, and I can actually give you stats. I don't, I don't think you want those now, but I can show you, and again, incredibly proactive approach to addressing our homeless community and what is going on as far as the quality of life issues. So that is some of the modifications that you see as well. So none of those heart, we, I heard the term thrown around really loosely, like it was like, oh, it's FTE spots. It's not. Everything is coming out of somewhere else to support these functions. If that helps you at all.
Yeah, just, so did you say par is still involved in the homeless?
Par is involved primarily with the abatements in the morning. So there is a par team that goes out and does that, so as well as the heart team, which is the homeless people, our officers that focus on homeless individuals. But then par goes does other activities for the community, while the heart team stays focused specifically on homelessness. And that's how we function. So the par is actually down right now, or down about, I think, 10 spots. But then again, when I increased the heart team, that actually brought it up to where we now have one in six. So it's basically been a push. I really wanted to get centralized strategic focus on homelessness as opposed to having them be a jack-of-all-trades, because you've got to have a certain skill set to deal with somebody who is homeless. You have to be, understand what the resources are, how to communicate with them, the repetitive nature of it. You don't get somebody out of homelessness on the first conversation. And also, I wanted them to be enforcers, too. So this is not a thing where we're out there handing out unicorns and rainbows. We are arresting people, they are putting people in jail, they are citing people, and they are doing what they need to do to hopefully change the pattern of that individual's life and also improve the quality of life in the community of Aurora.
Thank you.
Have you cut the budget for unicorns and rainbows? But I do have a question, and that, tell me about the civilian, you gave awards last night, you had a great award ceremony, and you gave some awards to some of your civilians that worked there. Tell me about your civilian strength and where you're going with that.
Yeah, the civilian strength, again, is incredibly important, because that's something that sometimes gets forgotten. So as we approach the 748 of authorized, and hopefully we will move beyond that, and that is really the goal of what I think we need to do in this city, to provide for the safety. Again, we have to also consider our non-sworn, and so our non-sworn are incredibly important. And so what I have done, I had taken our business services division, which is where John is and lives, and I have basically civilianized that entire process. And so the spots that you see here, the quartermaster spot, the position related to property and evidence, some of those other spots, they have been completely civilianized. Where a captain was is now a civilian person. And so those are those FTEs that are modifying it, because I don't need a captain of the police or a police officer that could be out in a black and white doing proactive policing, being involved with quartermaster activities, property and evidence. Again, we have incredibly, incredibly gifted, non-sworn personnel that achieve that goal and fill those roles, allowing our officers who have that skill set to go out and focus on crime.
Councilor Hancock and then Councilor Jones.
Yeah, Chief, I've noticed vehicles on the highway with accidents, accident vehicles. Now, those, are those civilianized as well, or are they...
Yes.
Okay, so how many of those do we have now?
Right now, we're at about 10, I believe.
12.
12. And if I could, I would increase that drastically, because again, they handle about, I think it was 12,000 calls. I talked to them last time, or it was some, maybe 2,000, I forget what it was. It was an incredible amount, where they are doing the traffic collisions. And again, that keeps an officer out in the field to be able to focus on crime and community concern issues.
And so for you all, yeah, what that looks like a lot of times, it doesn't mean that we're not going to have an officer respond. They'll respond, but once that civilian gets there, that officer's back in service much quicker, right? Just, ideally, they don't, the officer doesn't even have to respond, but what we're seeing a lot of times is, the officer responds, the civilians are there, and the officer's like, I'm out of here. And that's, again, it's a force multiplier.
And if I could, with your consideration to that process, too, that can also be enveloped into a lot more things. We could have them taking cold reports on property crimes, on things where we don't need to tie up law enforcement officers. If there is no threat as far as an ongoing law enforcement event, we could have civilianization really occur and take place. And that is the goal of what I want to see for the '26, '27, especially as we get into Q1, Q2 of '27 would be amazing.
Councilor Jones.
And so what...
I'm sorry, Councilor, I gotta go ahead and finish.
Okay, fine. Are we quit? Are you looking at adding as more to grows? Are we looking at adding another division?
That would be spectacular. Again, we've had this discussion. I would love to take on another command, another division. The city deserves it, needs it, but right now, I think financially, we are not there. I do not believe in substations. They are a Band-Aid. They do not solve a problem. They actually cause more issues. And so what we are doing, and you will see this come January 31st, we are changing the beats of our three commands that we do have. Right now, our commands go north-south. District one has probably the biggest impact as far as call load. I did an analysis of each beat, what those beats, what the calls are. And again, there was a huge disparity between some commands and other commands. And so what we're actually doing is going to make it north, or I'm sorry, east to west. And again, why we do that is because now we have basically demonstrated that all of the call loads for each of those three commands will be equivalent. And I think the service is going to be increased, whether it's three, whether it's one, or whether it's two. Obviously, what I'm hoping for and what I think this city really needs, and again, there is no getting around it, this city needs a district four. And what we can do now that we're going from east to west, we can now break it up in the center, and then we can start having northwest division, southwest division, south-central division, and we can split that up. That is the future. We don't have the resources. I don't have the funding right now for infrastructure changes or modifications. So we are going to put a Band-Aid on it a little bit by changing the modifications and how we deploy and what we respond to. But yes, we do need, without question, a district four. We need new infrastructure, all of our buildings, all of our locations. Again, none of these buildings that we have, and again, I'm just throwing this out there for communication, none of the buildings that we have for this police department, which is a major city police department, were ever designed as police facilities. So again, that is the struggle, and that's something that impacts how we operate, what we do, and how we function, and how we serve. We have come beyond that, and we will, but this is something I really hope that everybody considers and thinks about as we move forward.
Further questions? Councilor Hocken.
So with relation to the crash folks, initially, we had kind of said that'll be for non-injury crashes. I've started to see situations where there's an officer responding and those folks where there, it must be an injury crash just by looking at what's happening. So are they kind of supporting those officers so they can still leave earlier once the injury situation is resolved?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, and they have an incredible skill set. Again, some of those specialized units, like traffic, or SWAT, or homelessness, the ability to navigate those, having somebody specialized who can step into that void and do it and give guidance and counsel is huge to our personnel. So again, that's why they're doing what they're doing.
Awesome. And then just a follow, or an additional question related to, again, heart. So thank you for clarifying that those were out of the district budgets and FTEs, because that was one of the questions that I had. I didn't see it called out specifically. But in terms of having, and of course, you brought the data, because you're like, you don't want to hear it, but actually, I do. So we have six FTEs, officers, one FTE sergeant, kind of dedicated to those activities. So with that dedication of resources, what are the citations that we are seeing issued and then arrests? And then how are we tracking what's heart versus everything else?
Perfect. And thank you for bringing that up, and I'm sorry, but I do love data, and so here's what I'm going to show you. So in D1, again, we, individual abatements have been 280. We've issued 86 summons. We've done 58 camping bans. We've done 15 probable cause arrests, and then we have issued 60 warrants. The 60 warrants for D1, now this is just D1, that's where it would connect into the heart team if they decide to take services. Again, it's like anything else, they have their decision-making process. If they don't want to take heart, they don't have to take heart. And so again, the involvement is up to that person. In D2, we've had 220 individual abatements. We've had 52 summonses issued. We have done 43 camping bans, 11 probable cause arrests, 49 warrants. We spent a total of 254 hours, 0.85 minutes in that location. In D3, it's been 73 individuals abated, 12 summonses, eight, four camping bans, zero probable cause arrests, 10 warrants. We spent 75.75 hours in that location. So that's what that heart team is focused on. The connection with the court is based upon the individual that receives the warrants. Once they go to court, they have a decision to either go to the heart court or decide they're going to go another direction.
Awesome. And then, sorry, can you repeat the probable cause arrests for D1 and the warrants?
Yep. D1 was 15 probable cause arrests. Warrants were at 60. And then for D2, it was 11 and 49. Hours spent in D1 was 27.9, and then in D2 was 254.85.
And D3?
D3 was 75.7 hours spent, 10 warrants, zero PC arrests.
And 12 citations, you said?
That's correct.
Great. Thank you. And I had a different question, I don't remember what it was. So that is helpful information, though, and is that, do you, I'm sorry, I haven't been able to attend the public safety meetings because they conflict with my work, but do you report that out in the public safety meetings as well?
I do.
Okay, great. So I'll follow those agendas for that information.
Councilor Hocken.
Our DNA crime lab partnership, do we have one FTE that we provide to them? I can't remember.
I believe it is one, yes. John, is it more than one?
Yeah, we actually, yeah, you want to talk about John? We have lots of staff that are down there. What you might be thinking of is, we used to provide, we used to provide the director position.
Right.
And then when we went out last year, a year before that, there was an employee of another, one of our other partner agencies that applied for and was the top selection. They didn't want to become a City of Aurora employee, so we let them stay in their original order thing, and then we took over providing the deputy director. So we now, and we went, when we did that, we went from providing a lieutenant, we civilianized that position, and so now that is a civilian that is the deputy director of that.
And Arapahoe.
Yeah.
That's an employee from Arapahoe doing it. We do have the DNA. I think we have the majority of bodies that are down there processing. And John, I don't know, you don't have the numbers on that, do you?
We have 13 total employees, two of those are DNA.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And we just reclassified one that starts in 2026. That'd be our third DNA.
Is that all working really well with that partnership?
No, it's not.
Oh. Okay.
No. Yeah, it's not working. We were having real struggles for the amount of funding that we put in, for the amount of bodies. I don't think that, I think that there's still room for opportunity and growth. We on the board, the mayor sits on the board as well, we are focused on that. As a matter of fact, some of the DNA, we're having such struggles as far as prioritization with other counties that are involved, with Douglas or Arapahoe, because they look at crimes and they say, hey, we want this DNA processed, and they want it processed for a burglary. Well, we need DNA processed for a homicide. And so they're saying, well, it's fair if we get this done and you get this done, but it's not really, it should be based on a harm index. And the harm index is violent crime, crimes that impact persons. And so we are really struggling with that. As a matter of fact, we had the homicide, I think it was two months ago, with the individual stabbed multiple people, and we actually have to go contract out to a private source to get DNA done, because the trial or the court proceedings are occurring, and we couldn't get the DNA process fast enough. And so we have to go outside. Luckily, we're getting it free for this one. It's a pro bono thing, but that is where we are at. So no, this is not a well-oiled machine. I look at my role to give you honest and truthful information, and this is really, there is dysfunction there. I think there's opportunity for growth, and we will do what we need to do with it. But again, when I first got there, we looked at staffing levels that were based off of 2016. Obviously, a lot has changed with all the participants since 2016. Our funding has increased, so I asked for a staffing request on it to where we are at. I think we're still depleted as far as what's necessary to process the amount of evidence that's going into that location. But again, we're working on that, trying to get better with it. We're going to have new counsel coming on that will take the place of what Pete was doing, but there is, it is not a well-oiled machine.
And the governance of that entity is per jurisdiction, or is it, are there commissioners involved?
There are commissioners involved as well, yes.
Is there anything that we should be doing as a body to address that?
I think it's really, you know, I'm, I'm part of it, but it's really the chief's[1648.22] I think it's really, you know, I'm part of it, but it's really the chief's leadership, given his technical understanding of law enforcement. But there's always going to be attention there. And so I think it will self-correct. I think the chief is more forceful than his predecessors, and that's probably the difference.
Yeah. So we're going to, we're going to, we're going to work it out. There's a lot of money in, again, how people put money in. So one entity put money in based on the building.
Yes.
And that's how they look at it.
Right.
"Well, we gave you money for the building." Well, that building, considering when you look at what's going on out there, Amazon, Sentinel, the airport, everything else, I guarantee you the cost has increased on that, where we're paying for services and continue to pay for services based upon the amount. And again, what they're getting out of and what we are getting out of is two different things as far as their cost impact down the road. And so again, it's an issue.
Thank you.
Okay. Further questions?
Crime is down 22.2%. I'll let you know. 58 days since we've had any fatal or non-fatal shootings. That is a record. Our homicides are down across the board. Violent crime is down across the board. And then you brought up larceny. I just want to hit that up real quick. For you, we are down 8.9%. We have gone from 1,549 to 1,480. So larceny is down, and it's having an impact across the board as long as crime.
And Chief, I just want to thank the police department for all you're doing with the three strikes, the no driver's licenses for 4,000. My constituents, and I'm pretty sure everybody else appreciates that, so that's significant.
Yeah, they're doing great. They're amazing.
They're doing great.
Thank you. I was just with a few of your par officers, I think last Friday or something, I can't remember. It was up on Beale Street and 12th, which is one of the really high-crime areas. And they commented how much crime has dropped in that area, but two stubborn areas remain, prostitution and homelessness with drugs associated with both.
Yes.
Illicit drug association.
And the technology that you're paying for, for the city, it's having an impact. We have gone beyond just being 21st century. We are pushing it into the next decade. So it's absolutely amazing.
How close are we on rolling out the budgets?
Yeah, that's, we already have an employee now that's been picked up, so that employee is part of the package, the overall. The equipment logistics should be coming out mid to late November. We have scouted out 25 different locations where those are going to be placed, and we have another 25 that we're looking at now. So again, it is, it's in the process. It's not something that's going to be pie in the sky. It's going to be on the deck very soon.
Okay. Further questions? Comments? Thank you. Is there any objection to the police proposal budget? Seeing none, congratulations. Thank you. General management, once we get general management, I'm going to, I'll do a 10-minute break so people can go get their lunch. It's right on the hallway.
Okay. So for general management, this is our collection of a number of smaller offices. It's on your agenda. Kendall Koche here. She's, I've tasked her with kind of as the director of general management. It's not a function we've had before. I've tasked her with that. She gets the fun task of figuring out what that is, kind of getting those disparate offices rowing in the same direction. You'll see them listed, but either Kendall or some of our individual officers can talk to those. So within general management, you have fleet, city manager's office, city clerk, internal audit, intergovernmental relations, inter-national immigrant affairs, as well as the new office of police accountability. So any questions on any of those? Or Kendall, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Questions?
I do have a concern about the city manager's office. But is there, are there?
Fifty percent for me, too.
Okay. Is there any objection to the general management budget?
I just have a question. Are we staffed in the city clerk's office?
Yes, we're fully staffed.
Okay.
Further questions? Comments?
Counsel was under, they ran through what was our group.
Oh, no. Counsel separate. Yeah, counsel separate. Greg's going to come back to the council budget here after we get through Marshall.
Okay. Further questions? Seeing none, or any objection to the general management budget? Seeing none, then we'll take a 10-minute break. Time is now 12:30. We'll come back at 12:40. Lunches are, lunches are on me.
Hey, guys.
I'm there. Yes.
Yes.
I think that I am the only person keeping you from going home. So we're going to go through this nice and fast. Thing one, you've got city council. City council, you are taking part in the furloughs along with the rest of us. City council, you are taking part in the cuts to your travel and training, just like the rest of us.
I get a day off?
You get a day off.
Let me know how you do that.
I will have Scott turn off all your emails on those days and say you've been furloughed. So there you go.
Details of your budget are on F25, but if you want the big-time detail, go to page I-36, and that's where you get the line item breakdown. Any questions on city council?
I did have a question.
Okay. If we, if we're talking budget, I can do it. I also have my ace in the hole for any actual questions.
Yes. No actual budget questions. So in the information that we had received, it said that we spent zero of our contingency fund in 2025, but this shows expenditures total as 16,000.
I always project that you're going to spend.
Okay. So that's, the other word's accurate.
Yep. That's a projection.
So, so we spent zero of the 16,000.
I believe that's correct.
And in the past, we've been spending, you know, under 5,000. So my proposal would be to cut the council contingency fund from 16,000 to 5,000. Because we don't use it. Cut the council contingency fund from 16,000 to 5,000, because we haven't used more than 5,000 in the last several years.
Counsel Marcol.
Just for my identification and education, what does the contingency money go for?
You have $16,000 built in for anything that comes up throughout the year. You have the ability to come up and go, "Oh, we just learned about a table. We just learned about this group that needs some money. We just learned about anything that you want. You bring it up to this crowd. This crowd approves the expense, and then we've already got the budget set aside. If you don't spend it, it reverts back to funds available."
What did we spend last year for sponsorships and stuff like that?
We spent $556.
Sponsorships?
In the, in the council.
Contingency.
In the contingency.
And there's two things there. There's the contingency or the ones that are not budgeted, in addition to the, they're sort of unforecasted. You all do have a list of line items in your budget where traditionally, year after year, we get these requests, and you all say, "Yep, let's do it." So I think there's $500 for the boots-not-suit events at the, you know, the Arapahoe County Commissioners. There's different, there's a series of different events like that, that because we spelled out in the budget, when we get the invoice, we pay it. We don't come back to you all and say, "Hey, do you want to keep doing it this year?" So we give, that details into your budget.
Well, that's on page I-36.
And then also, it is part of your, the answers I think we gave you just now, there are some of those that I will tell you that we still budget for, but I don't know if we've gotten an invoice in the last several years. And Ali is nodding. If you have questions on that, it was in the responses, the written responses we gave you. So again, we'll take your direction on this.
So MLK would be something that we would automatically support or is?
Already funded.
Yes.
Castle Marcol.
So, right, we have a lot of things that we routinely fund. I think the main reason why we still have some stuff here, it's less about events and it's more about, right, we send flowers and a card if someone passes away, or things of that, or is very ill, or things of that nature that end up hitting this contingency fund. Otherwise, we could say, "We don't want to do this at all." But there are some unanticipated things that we spend on.
Question is, would contingency fund build on itself inside you?
No, it does not.
It goes, reverts back to funds available, and next year, you get another 16,000.
May I ask a clarifying question to your two things? Is that, is the cut from, what is it? You said 16,000 to 5,000. Is it one time or is it? the Arapaho County Commissioners. There's different, there's a series of different events like that, that because we spelled out in the budget, when we get the invoice, we pay it. We don't come back to you all and say, hey, do you want to keep doing it this year? So we give, that details into your budget.
Oh, that's on page I36.
And then also, it is part of your, the answers I think we gave you just now, there are some of those that I will tell you that we still budget for, but I don't know if we've gotten an invoice in the last several years. And Aliyah's nodding. If you have questions on that, it was in the responses, the written responses we gave you. So again, we'll take your direction on this.
So MLK would be something that we would automatically support?
It's already funded.
Yes.
Councilor.
So, right, we have a lot of things that we routinely fund. I think the main reason why we still have some stuff here, it's less about events and it's more about, right, we send flowers and a card if someone passes away, or things of that, or is very ill, or things of that nature, that end up hitting this contingency fund. Otherwise, we could say, we don't want to do this at all. But there are some unanticipated things that we spend on.
Is the contingency fund billed on itself inside years?
No, it does not.
It goes, reverts back to funds available, and next year you get another 16,000. May I ask a clarifying question to your two things? Is that, is the cut from, what is it? You said 16,000 to 5,000. Is it one time or is it ongoing?
We can make it one time and see what happens.
Okay. Further questions, Councilmember?
So, federal lobbying trip we went this last year, does that come out of there, or is that?
That's a, that's a different line item.
Am I looking in the wrong place?
It's, it's a, it's a separate line item. It's actually up here.
Okay.
And your travel and training.
Oh, yeah, we do that. So, okay, so removed by councilmember, second by council.
Can I offer a friendly mimic? Can we split it? Instead of 15, can we do 7,500?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We take the bottom of the top.
Okay.
Just to see, because it'll be, we'll say 5,000, and something will happen. We like, dang it!
What page, what page is the detail on that?
The detail is on page I36, almost at the very end of the book. You're wanting to go from 16 to 7,500?
Mm-hmm. Would that be okay?
No, we didn't.
Okay, is there further discussion? Is there any objection? I see none of that, then that will stand.
So we keep that on the board?
Okay. From 16,000 to 7,500, so what is that?
Councilmember.
Anything else on, that's going on the board. Anything else on council? Yes.
Yeah, I'm trying to find, because I don't have, I forgot my book. In the subscriptions, I mentioned last time cutting three of them, and maybe Jason might be able to help me, because I'm trying to remember. It was.
What are these, R.A.Q.C. and that other?
Yeah. Yeah, where's the Conference of Mayors?
U.S. Conference of Mayors.
Well, it is absolutely critical that we defend and support.
The third from the bottom on that list.
Oh, no, it's not on, I'm on the wrong thing.
U.S.
Oh, yes, yes. No wonder. Okay, yeah. Cut U.S. Conference of Mayors. Also, wasn't it the Regional Air Quality Council?
That's one, yes.
And then I had one more, which was?
Was it the Regional Economic Advancement Partnership?
Yes. Those three. Those three.
Councilor.
So we have paid those or not? That's not clear on the detail.
The U.S. Conference of Mayors, we have budgeted but not paid for the last two to three years, three years, two years.
Two years.
And then I think we have paid the Regional Air Quality Council, and then have we paid Re- we've also paid.
2024, not possible, but they sent an invoice for 2025.
Interesting. So just to clarify, like, a lot of those funds actually go to small businesses for different grant programs that the R.A.Q.C. has to allow businesses to, for example, purchase an electric generator to replace a dying old gas generator that they have.
So we did not fund it in '25?
No, we have funded the Regional Air Quality Council.
Aliyah said she doesn't know if we got an invoice in 2025, but the point is that, like, there are programs that they implement that actually benefit people directly in our community.
Do we have a representative on it?
I think there is an appointed representative per region. We don't personally have one. Our region has someone there, but I'm not sure. That's worth looking into, like, what our representative is.
How about we cut it in half?
Now, this is.
I mean, we're not doing anything with it.
So it's a state program?
It's not a state program. It is a, I believe it's like a regional nonprofit. So this isn't the.
There's a rack that's a state.
Right. We don't know what it is. There's two racks. There's a rack that's a state entity, that's a regulatory entity, and then there's this, which is not a regulatory entity.
I would say, we don't, we don't control where it goes to.
I say we cut it. We don't even know what it is. Like, we don't even have a rep on it.
I know what it is.
We can bring it, we can bring it back next year. Let's cut it for '26.
But then we don't have much money to support businesses.
Well, that was my question. Where do we know where the reference that it goes to?
We don't know.
You said nonprofits, so that immediately gets my ears tingling. But secondly, do we get any reporting back, or where is this money, who are we supporting? Where is it going? Do they report back? What's the efficacy of it? Am I, $67,000?
Right. I mean, they, they do have reports that are public, and if we wanted someone to come present on it, they would.
I would say.
My proposal is to cut it for 2026. We're in a deficit. We can always revisit it.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Bergen, second by Councilmember Hickok, to delete the funding for.
U.S. Conference of Mayors.
Oh, wait, wait. Well, that's, we suck. Let's just, let's just do this one first.
One at a time.
Let's do that one first. Okay, is there any objection to cutting for this nonprofit?
It's not a nonprofit. It's a regional organization that has been operating in conjunction with our state for multiple decades.
We know that money.
I guess I could add it back. Maybe we can get someone before the budget to come do a presentation.
Yeah, why don't you do that, then we can kind of know about it.
So can we, like, cuss and put it in the supplemental?
I'm keeping my motion to get it for 2026.
Is there any objection?
I object, and I will work on getting someone to come present.
Take it off the board.
Okay, bye. Regional Economic Advancement Partnership, $2,000.
What is that?
We don't know either.
It's a small, if I remember correctly, it's a small, primarily rural Adams County economic development agency.
That's not Aurora.
Adams County. That's not Aurora.
Adams County, Aurora does in fact have.
A little sliver up there.
Yeah, I mean, my gut.
Can we put it on the board?
Cut it. Okay. Removed by Councilmember Bergen, second by Councilwoman Gassau, to cut, what is it called?
Regional Econ Advancement Partnership.
Okay, that.
That.
All right, discussion? I see no discussion. Is there any objection to cutting that program? Okay, seeing none, we'll cut that program.
Okay, so clarification, is that cutting ongoing, or is that cutting one time?
We'll just stick with the one.
One time for now?
Just.
Okay, so put up Regional, what's it called, Economic Advancement Partnership?
That one already went.
It's 2,000.
Okay, now, you were gonna do the U.S. Conference of Mayors.
Partnership for 2,000.
Councilmember Bergen, you were gonna do the U.S. Conference of Mayors.
Do you have a tenure on this, Mayor?
Well, you know, given my social life, I get very few invitations to anything, and this is a chance for me to go back to Washington. No, I hate that place. I went once to that organization in, in January 2019, and I never came back. It went, oh, yeah, take it off. Cut it.
So I have a second. 2019?
2019 was the last time I went to that. January, January 20. No, we never, after the first year, we didn't spend, we didn't, we didn't fund it, but they left it in the budget.
You guys tell us. You wanted, you wanted to talk about the potential for siren replacement.
Oh, wait, but first of all, is there any objection?
Sirens.
Is there any objection to deleting the U.S. Conference of Mayors? Okay, so.
So that goes to the, yeah.
That seems like a pass. Okay. Is that one time or ongoing?
Sounds like it's ongoing.
Forever.
Ongoing.
Ongoing.
That one's ongoing?
Yep. So the 19262 is ongoing. $1,000 is one time, and the R.A.Q.C. did not?
Yeah, it's gone.
Gone for '26.
It is on for '26.
It's gone, it's gone.
It's gone for '26.
Gone for '26.
That's for '26, and our.
$67,000.
So you should have three up there, Greg.
Yep. We've got three of them. Two are one time, one is ongoing.
Councilmember Bergen.
I have a proposal. People, pay attention. So that's almost 100,000, whatever that adds up to.
Yes.
90 something.
Pretty close.
Would this council be okay if we appropriated that money towards the siren replacement for the entire city, not, you know, the whole city?
Not for Ward 6.
Ward 6, in your mind, is the entire city.
No, it's for the whole city. I'm gonna fight her, because it's for the whole city.
Remember about fiduciary duty?
It is for the whole city. I'm gonna fight you.
Your sirens, it might work.
They're for your own too.
So, yes. So part of what, if you all want a quick update, as you know, we were, we were in front of you all earlier this year, told you that the old sirens kind of needed to be retired. We've gone out, we've looked. There is, we have a proposal. It would actually replace all of the existing sirens, add some new sirens in those areas that we needed, the growing areas. These new sirens are, each of them has a Wi-Fi transmitter. It is, the service we would then get from the provider essentially would provide 24/7 monitoring of the entire city by professional meteorologists, so that it's not our OEM folks or our 911 folks that are deciding when and how to set these off. If there's a weather alert that triggers certain criteria, they can then set off the sirens for that area. Because as we told you all at that meeting earlier this year, the problem with our current sirens is.
The whole city.
You have to set off the entire city. These sirens would allow us to set it off just for the specific area, and then what we would do is, if you all want to do that, we would then do a public information campaign to make sure folks understand, when they hear that siren, that is their prompt to then check the, you know, check their, check our social media, check the internet, check the, you know, the weather, to see what's going on.
Duck roll and cover.
And what that means.
So it can work just for Ward 6, it could just be set just to go off for Ward 6 as necessary.
That's right.
So this would, correct me if I'm wrong, but this would cover the ongoing cost.
Correct. This would cover the ongoing cost. We're working through what, what the replacement cost would look like, and some of our options on that. The ongoing costs are about, you know, I think 80 to 90,000 dollars a year. So this would cover that ongoing cost. There'd be a capital replacement cost of, depending on what, how much we do, you know, a million to, you know, probably a million and a quarter. We could figure that out, some of our capital funds, some of our other stuff. But if that's the direction from council, we will move forward with that, come back with you all with the information of what that looks like. But this would provide funding and direction for us to do that.
So just a clarification, you said new areas, but I want to make sure.
It's a replacement of all existing ones?
Already said.
Yeah, no, yes, yes, ma'am. It replaces all the existing sirens, as well as if there are gaps in our existing sirens, it covers those as well as new areas.
Okay.
Okay, I'm here for that.
Okay, discussion?
Constituents love you.
They do?
They will after this.
It is, again, I just being very blunt with you all, obviously, after the events in Texas, it's got a heightened level. I still think there are limited utility with that, given the fact that these are automatically monitored and some other things like that. I think there is value in them, and so I think, you know, that doesn't mean that we still don't have work to do in terms of informing our community around what the sirens mean, what they don't mean, and then how folks need to stay informed. We will take care of that piece of it. That's an, that's an education campaign. This is a tool. I do think that, given the value of the monitoring, and then the ability to modernize it so that it's, it's not the entire city, we can do targeted areas, I think there is value in that.
You know, you don't think it's.
In the total?
The totals, depending on how, they made some recommendations for some areas that we're gonna have to look at. It's probably a million to a million and a quarter when we land on it for one time. And then the ongoing monitoring costs for, again, they're, they're providing that ongoing monitoring with professional meteorological staff that are, they're identifying, hey, there's a tornado warning, there's, you know, whatever it is, they're identifying those area, and they're setting off those. Now, that's not to say that we can't set off sirens if somehow there's something that happens. One of the things we've talked about is, let's say that there's a hazardous spill, and we have a plume going in an area. We do have the ability to go in and say, hey, I want to draw, you know, and set the sirens off in this area. So there's, and there's six sirens in that area. They would all go off, and that would tell folks, oh, something's going on. I need to check as to what's going on here. It may not be a weather event, maybe something we've triggered locally. But this, again, we understand these are concerns you all get. Obviously, the events, unfortunate events in Texas this year highlighted that. I don't think we're subject to flash flooding, but there's certainly an increased awareness of emergency notifications.
Is that an old technology?
I would, I would tell you that I think it is still a little bit of an old technology, but it's with a much, it's with a modern brain. The fact that we have the Wi-Fi, and it's, and it's remote, and it's monitored 24/7.
Councilmember.
So this is nowhere near a million dollars.
No, this is.
This is the ongoing costs. This provides the ongoing costs. We're gonna look for some options. We have some funding in the capital projects fund for how to fund that million dollars. So we'll be back to you all probably in the spring supplemental as to how to fund that capital piece. This would provide the ongoing piece and direction for us to figure out that capital piece.
Okay. Greg?
One question, it's actually more for you. In the beginning, it was 100. You said 80 to 90. Should we put 100, or 80, or 90?
Whatever this number is, we're setting aside for that.
Up to.
Up to?
Yeah.
Okay, so we, so we know we've got it covered then.
Even though the count was, was one time, mostly one time.
Okay, further discussion? Is there any objection to moving the 100,000 dollars?
What is centennial noise?
What is that about?
Seems like it's out of our territory?
No, it's fine.
So that, I believe the centennial noise is associated with the centennial airport noise.
It covers Ward 5 a lot.
Oh, but let me ask, okay, I need to finish this one. Is there any objection to moving the 100,000? Seeing none, then we'll do that. Okay, go. Other, is there further discussion on any other issues?
Real quick, if I could, Mayor, just so we're on it, if you go, if you, if you're following along on page I37.
Six.
I36, bingo. I did ask Aliyah on those designated items, as I told you, when we get the requests in, we pay for those. In the same spirit of this, there are three or four that Aliyah drew to my attention that she, we haven't, we haven't done. We set aside money, we don't get it. So one of those is the Aurora Singers, the Aurora Symphony, the Aurora Symphony Orchestra. And what was the other one you?
There was one, it's a Cherry Creek Award Dinner that they have not hosted for at least five years. It might come back, but as of now.
So again, just to try, in terms of as we're cleaning these things up, want full visibility, just, those are things that, you know, you've told, some council in the past that said, hey, set this money aside, we don't get a bill, and it's, it's appropriation that's tied up. You know, obviously, if we don't get a bill, we don't spend it, but at the same time, if, while we're cleaning this up, if you all want to, we can clean those up.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Aurora Singers and Orchestra. Tell me, what, what is set aside monies are for what? What was it for?
I think in the past, it was general support for those operations.
Because, I mean, the words, the, we have, Aurora Symphony Orchestra has been in existence for 38 years.
I would leave it.
And they, and they, they don't, not only do they not have a home, but they go and do free concerts all over the city all year long. And I would, I would not want us to not give them.
I would support, keeping it.
Maybe we need to give it to them.
They're not asking for it, so we should tell them.
Maybe they don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
I leave it there.
I think they need to know, because they have fundraisers all year round.
So the orchestra will leave in place? Okay.
Yeah.
And the singers?
I'd leave them in place, too.
I've never seen the singers. I don't know anything about the, I know about the orchestra, but I don't know anything about the singers.
Nobody here knows a single singer.
I have heard them before.
I do know the orchestra, because I, they've done the, we do the scholars. They always play.
Oh, yeah, that's what she said. She doesn't, she doesn't know.
I mean, if she doesn't know.
And I would know, but I don't know about them, because I'm involved in anything art centric.
It's 2,500 bucks. If you guys want to get rid of it.
Get rid of it.
So get rid of that one. The other one, I think, is the CCA Foundation. So we'll keep in the symphony, singers, and the CCA Luncheon Foundation is the other one?
Luncheon table.
The table, that's 1250.
I know, we did pay for that.
Yeah, I'd keep it.
What's Cherry Creek?
Do they do it, though? No, it's at Cherry Creek. I don't think, I don't. I thought you said they haven't done it in five years.
What is that?
The luncheon, they haven't done in five years, right?
Yeah, for ACC?
Not a luncheon.
No, the CCA.
CCA.
Cherry Creek Association.
Oh, no, Cherry Creek.
Yeah, Foundation Scholarship Luncheon Table. They haven't done it in five years. So that's 1250.
No, that's, the CCA Foundation, they do, and we attend. The CCS Foundation Annual Gala Table is the one that.
CCS. Oh, you're talking about CCS, so that's even more. That's three grand.
Yeah, that's, go ahead and slice that.
Yeah, I'm okay with taking that one off.
CCS.
It's the CCS. It's the $3,000 one, yes. $3,000 CCS.
Go on, boys.
And then the Aurora Singers for 2,500. That is the motion on the floor.
Okay. Discussion? Any objection? Okay, we. Okay. Discussion. Any objection? Okay, we took them off.
Okay, thank you all. Okay. Wait a nickel.
All right, let's just go back over there.
Every $1 billion budget for-
CCS.
CCS.
Hey, it all adds up. Dollar saved is a dollar earned. My dad used to tell me that all the time.
Anything to get me out of going to another event, because otherwise that could be-
Move your social.
Anything else from City Council?
Did you have anything else, Greg?
Not at all.
So we're taking 25% out of the travel budgets?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you'll see that reflected, yeah, in the, the annual appropriation had been $81,000, and so we're backing up $24,000 for next year, so there's only $57,000. So that's, that's reflective of that cut.
How much do we actually waste this year?
You know what? The question was, how much do we actually use? If you go into the packet that I sent you on Thursday, there's, there's some detail on the, on the actual spending every year. And if you want to know individual like yourself, she's got the details.
Okay.
All right.
That's what I'm handling. I think Greg's got non-departmental.
Yeah, I've got, I've got one more. Can I go to non-departmental?
Yeah, anything else on City Council?
No, we're good.
Amended, got it.
Non-departmental, page F-133, if you want to look through it. Very technical, that's where all the transfers live. There are cuts in here. They're usually cuts having to do with another department's cut, like the decrease in the, in the subsidy would live in non-departmental, because non-departmental owns the cut, or owns transfers. And there's a couple revenues in there. Very technical stuff.
Anything? Okay.
Okay, this is good stuff. Anything on capital projects or anything else that we haven't talked about yet?
Okay, oh, is there, which budget was that?
The non-departmental, we need to approve.
Any, any, motion is in order. Okay, Councilmember Hancock, moved by Councilmember, second by Councilmember Burgin, to approve the non-departmental budget. Discussion, sitting down, discussion, any objection? Then, that's it.
All right. Capital Projects Fund or anything else that we haven't discussed yet?
No.
We're so, did you want to make a motion on the rest of it, or we just, are we good?
So it's your call. So Laura can answer any questions, obviously. Hopefully, you got a good flavor for it in the budget presentation. We had to make some significant reductions and adjustments in the Capital Projects Fund. As you heard in that, it remains a challenge. We're taking a little bit of a wait-and-see on that. It's going to be probably an ongoing piece of it. Any questions on what's in there, what's not in there? All right, so that's on the capital project. And then finally, Greg, give them a quick overview on, on the miscellaneous stuff. Like, we can do those as one big-
I would even do better than that. On the miscellaneous, there's three items on here. Two items you do need to approve to go forward to formal. That is the proposed pay schedule and the proposed GID ordinance. The proposed service fee is just in there. It's information for you, the service fee packet. It doesn't need to go forward. It's more informational for you. But I was going to do it in this, in this, this way. Do you want to see a tiny presentation on the proposed pay schedules?
I think I speak for the entire council, and we would like a long presentation.
Do you have nothing else to do today?
Well, you took the US Conference of Mayors, what life do I have?
Two of us sit on M&amp;F, you've already seen it.
Yep. And it's in your packet, we trust you, that, your escribe packet.
Okay.
All right. How about the proposed GID ordinances?
So as a reminder on the GIDs, these are smaller areas. Most of them are associated with fence projects. The cities, for a number of years, had a program where we would go in, talk to neighborhoods. They would vote to tax themselves to build a masonry fence. We haven't had any interest in that in a while. So these are, you guys act ex officio on behalf of those neighborhoods. They voted to do this, so it's not, you know, they, they voted to do this tax. We've constructed the fence. This is paying off the debt on those fences. So I think all of them are fences, with the exception of one of them, I believe, is a sewer project, Pier Point Sewer. So those-
Cobblewood is.
Cobblewood is Streets, thank you. So those are it.
Are they doing Cobblewood Streets?
They're Cobblewood Street. Hey! So, any questions on the GIDs? Again, again, you all, we will break each of those out. You will act ex officio, and this is essentially to collect the debt and pay the debt service. They voted as a neighborhood or to tax themselves to do these.
Motion is in order.
So motion?
Moved by Councilmember Hancock, seconded by Councilmember Lawson. Discussion.
So that was 4B to 4G, is that what you're, 4B to 4G? Because then we're going to do 4H separately, right? No, 4H, no, no action, just information only.
No action, it's just the service fees every year. The city manager directs us to, to create the service fee packet. We just give it to you in case you have any questions on it.
Okay, discussion. Any discussion on, any objection?
And we're done?
We did not go back. Normally, at this point, we would go back to see if there's, and six votes for the things that are up there. I think the last thing I'll ask you is, again, given the relatively minor adjustments that we have up here, I just, if, Mayor,